So Heather and potentially Betsy joining us, but at this time, since we have a forum. And it's seven thirty-one, I'm going to call the meeting, uh, I'm gonna open the meeting up. Um, usually, uh, we always start off our meetings with updates, however, we are going to take care of our meeting minutes right now. Um, so we can get that out of the way and then go into updates. Um, so, Deib and Maureen. Can you unmute yourselves? Or Brian, if they are muted, can you unmute them?
Uh, I will unmute them now, they don't, doesn't seem to be. Here comes Heather Hannon, um, Deib is there, um. I don't see Maureen's audio being able, I only see a video at the moment.
Oh, Maureen just disappeared.
Yeah, I wonder if she had a connection issue, um, so we might want to wait a minute for that.
I'm just gonna put every, just pause everything, and she was here and she just left, to give her a minute to come back. And Heather, Heather Hannon, could you unmute yourself, please, if you're available?
Yep.
Hi Heather.
Hi.
Hi, we're just gonna dive right into the meeting minutes. Um, to get these out of the way, um. It's been asked to then put these to the frontline of our meeting. Um, we have, uh, I have three sets in paper in front of me. Do you guys, Deib and Heather, do you have them as well?
I have the fourteenth, January fourteenth, July seventh, twenty twenty, and actually two, two January fourteens, one for the planning board and one for the master plan steering committee. Is that what you got?
That came in through email. And then I have the three from our last meeting packet, which was June sixteenth,
Oh, oh, oh.
Seventh and June twenty-second.
That's right, mine are all downstairs, I forgot about those.
Okay.
I, I don't think I had any issues with those.
I only have the email ones, I'm on vacation.
Okay. Uh, Maureen, are you able to unmute yourself?
It's still showing that she does not have a microphone, whether that she, it's just showing. Yeah, so.
Okay. So she has no sound right now. And she's jumped off again. Why don't we put off the meeting minutes off for a few minutes? And, um, go into updates until Maureen's sound is back up and running. So, um, uh. So I'm gonna go into so, a couple of updates that I have, Brian, um. Brian's been on vacation, uh, beginning of this week, so I'm gonna, I, I wanna give him some updates and some things along with the planning board. Um, last night I attended this select boards meeting. And there were two points, uh, two topics that they discussed that, uh, impact the planning board and our work. One is the veil, which I did, uh, chime in on regarding it, uh, because they are as Brian noted in our previous meeting, they took our feedback, they took Brian's and Beth's, um, draft letter and they put their name on it, sent it off on behalf of the town. And I noted that today we were meeting to also discuss the veil and potentially the planning board sending out a separate letter. Would the select board prefer that going forward? That the chair of the select board and the chair of the planning board sign the same letter, or would it be better that we come in with different letters? Uh, the select board said that they would prefer, is my understanding from what they said, although they didn't take a vote or each one didn't go around the table, that we just sign the same letter. To do that on the select board's schedule, the planning board, um, after this, after this letter, um, the planning board would have to, um, make a vote to give one of our members the authority to sign that letter. Um, so it's something that we can talk about when we get to the veil at eight thirty, um, how we wanna proceed after we do choose whatever we wanna do at this moment in time. Um, they also discussed Converse Place, they had Ian Gillespie and the architect present to do a presentation on Converse Place. Um, there was some, uh, missing information in that, um, that I found really critical. And that a lot of the residents are unclear on. And, um, I know that we have a lot of people who are currently listening in, um, so just, so everyone is getting the updated, and it's not just to the planning board. When, um, they came in for Converse Place, they said they had fifteen percent affordable. The minimum requirement in the CBD for any project of that size is ten percent under the forty B laws and five percent under the median income. Correct, Brian? Cause I don't have it right before me. But that's what he's saying in the fifteen percent is he's meeting the bare, they're meeting the bare minimum of the CBD requirements. At the Converse Place, the buy right height is forty feet, which is the same for all of our houses, all the houses and, um, single unit housing in town is forty feet by right. He can go, they can go up to forty-eight feet by special permit. They are proposing a property height that is much higher than that. To get much higher than the forty-eight feet, they need to come in under a PUD, which is a different level of review and a different level of requirements. In the PUD, under section, it's seven point three point one, four point five, I believe. Um, it specifically says that to come in under, uh, PUD, you need to have diverse housing, affordable housing. Also in, um, and also, um, you, let's see, seven, three, one, point six, I think. I'm going off the top of my head. There's that. No, that's dimensional requirements.
Well.
Maybe nineteen point two.
Go up one. Oh, I'm sorry, that's height, right there. Seven, three, fourteen, six, dot, three.
So they need to offer more diverse housing opportunities than what the current zoning requests. And address the population needs of the Winchester community. What, what is very, um, meeting the bare minimum requirement to the CBD for any buy right project is not offering more diverse housing. And it's not, it's not meeting the needs. We know we have in town, we know those percentages of what we are short on inside our community. And what is being proposed is not meeting that short list. We are not looking at the high-end condos. So if they wanna come in under PUD, there's a difference, they're not, the programming of the building is not matching what a PUD requires. Um, and there are other things that the planning board discussed with them, but I wanna make sure that they say fifteen percent affordable. That is the bare minimum of what the required for a building of that size. By, under the special permit, not under PUD. To get the height that they presented, they need to come in under the PUD, they need to meet these requirements. That is currently where we're at, there, that's not being done. Um, so, uh, that's an update to the planning board. The select board did ask them if they were interested in doing a friendly forty B there. Um, and well, they, they use a lip. Brian, I know you weren't in attendance, the twenty-five percent lip is the terminology that they use, um. And the developer said to do that, there's, there's a trade-off. To get the affordable units, you will not get the physical contributions to the community. But you'll get the contributions of the units. Um, and with that, you will lose a lot of the positive parts. Part of the, Maureen, we can hear you.
Hi, I'm, I'm having trouble with my computer, so I'm on the phone.
Okay, we can hear you, you, you're here, um. And so they did have a conversation about that, doing the affordable housing, he talked about the delta, the financial loss between doing an affordable unit versus what a market rate unit on that site would go for. Um, so the select board, well, one member, wasn't the board as a full, uh, was, was wanting to see a forty B at the place of Converse versus continue the process. Um, and, uh, at the same time, I feel coming out of that, it might be beneficial for the planning board to put our feedback very clearly in a memo. Um, it seems, I, I felt I was very clear in our last meeting with the applicant, that that wasn't being met. Um, but based on, uh, some of the select board members' comments, they didn't realize what I was saying to the applicant. And there are other issues that the planning board brought up that we may wanna have documented and very clearly laid out and similar way that I just did. Um, so that's something that we wanna consider, we can take that up if we want to, uh, proceed, and I am happy to put it on our next agenda to create that memo. Um, if the planning board is interested in adding that to our agenda to really address the things that are missing in the conversation of Converse Place at this point. The third item I wanted to update you on is Chris Mulhern sent a memo to Mike Bettencourt and, um, I think I was succeed on it and Brian was as well. Chris Mulhern noted that in our zoning, we do not allow, um, offices, um, and people to work out of their homes. Um, out of their accessory, accessory buildings, and he would like that changed and would like us to review our zoning. Um, to see if we can remove that. Um, that people could build standalone structures on their properties for their occupation. As of right now, the pri, the primary use of the building needs to be residential over, um, occupation. Um, which means that all the, uh, all the additional buildings, like the garages and stuff, can't be used for offices. Um, so we can talk about that as well, uh, at nine fifteen in more depth if we want to take that on as an agenda issue. Um, and, uh, fiscal year twenty-one. So those are my main updates for right now, of the big things that have happened since we last met. Brian, do you wanna give your updates as well?
Um, sure, um, one update is that, um, one of the, uh, grants that um, we applied for was this micro enterprise grant, which are businesses of five people or less, that's what a micro enterprise, that's who's, um, eligible for this money. So, uh, different towns, we went together into a regional grant, it ended up being seventeen towns. Through, um, community development block grants for non-entitlement communities, which is, we, we are a non-entitlement community as far as CDBG goes. Um, so that made us allowed, uh, that allowed us to apply, uh, for the, um, for the grant, we the little, the smallest amount, uh, could have been applied for is fifty thousand dollars and the largest is four hundred thousand dollars. Um, we applied for two hundred and got one forty and pretty much everywhere, or everyone else got the same percentage lower, they got about um, something like seventy-something, seven, low seventy percent of what they asked for, but this money is gonna, we're gonna be able to give this to small businesses that are having trouble, uh, due to pandemic, uh, related problems, um, helping to uh, uh, pay rent or, or, or mortgage, um, or, um, things related to the business, they have to still be open. Um, and still be operating. Uh, but there's a number of things that this assistance can be useful, um, and we're really excited to be able to give it to Winchester small businesses.
Um. So I'm curious, I'm gonna jump in on that. Brian, I'm just concerned about how much time, but I have no idea this is going to take from your planning, um, effort. Have you, any way to gauge what's going to, what's, what's, uh, what, any forecast about what this will involve?
Um, the only thing I know is that the money is going to be going, going out quickly, so there's our, so we're not handling the, um, la, so, um, there's gonna be an online, um, application. Um, so, and we're just gonna be able to check it and be able to, uh, give it out there, we're waiting for further instructions, so I don't have.
So you're saying we, that is somebody else assisting you, cause there's a certain aspect that sounds clerical.
Um, well, I'll be, I'm gonna, to be fully honest, it was, it was kind of the email once we got the grant and then it was gonna be, um, you know, I guess it was the end of last week, um.
It'll be what? I can't hear you, I'm sorry, we're trying to get into the laptop too.
Sure.
Here I am, I'm on both, I'm now, thank you David, oh my god.
All right, you, you might get all.
Yes, I'm gonna hang up, just one second.
You, you're gonna get a lot of feedback if you have them on both.
Maureen needs to unmute herself.
Um, yeah, Maureen, I'm not gonna, it's, it's all you.
Brian, it's David, can you hear me?
Yes, now I can hear you.
Thank you. Okay, are you still, you still hear me?
Yes, you were saying that, how much time is this going to take, and the, the, the true answer is that there's gonna be more instruction coming from the state soon. Uh, but it is going to be a quick process because they wanna get the money out and, uh, quickly, uh, for businesses that need it.
Uh, is it, I mean, is it gonna, is it gonna take you, are you gonna lose a week on it, are you gonna lose a day on it? I, I just, I'm, it just seems like a lot of things, I'm gonna just say this right out. Um, do land in your office, and I think it's great that you're a willing worker bee, but at some point, it's like, you know, give it to Brian.
Um, well, right now, um, economic development is to the manager's office and myself, and that's, that's what we're doing. I, I don't, maybe we need to talk, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I don't know, like you said, I don't know who else would really do it, and I think it's because nobody else really knows who else would do it either, so you're right.
Well, about, do you think, I mean, it would make a difference to the board, I think if we thought you were going to end up, let's just I just think we have to deal with this, cause it keeps coming at us and it's like these little surprises. And if it were a month's commitment, we might have a different view about how you should be spending your time.
Understood.
So have you any guess? I mean, I'm, I'm guessing this is not huge, you're saying it's going out fast, but does that mean a week? Does it mean, I mean, two weeks? What's?
Um, I cannot imagine that it's a month, uh, but I certainly wouldn't wanna tie myself to anything, I think it's probably closer to, um, you know, a week and, or a, you know, closer to a week than two weeks, I guess, that's, that's what I would imagine. But, um, I should know more, I should know more, you know, very soon. Um, they just announced the award and put the press release, I think, out on Friday.
So, um, I'm going to direct this to Heather and say, we need a process, um, to work, we're all, we're trying to work together, but I do think it's important for us to retain some ability to get our own, our, our own work done when other things seem to, just like, where can this go? And it's just, it's concerning. Are you there Heather?
I, no, I'm here, I, I agree that there there is multiple issues going on here that are colliding and about to implode. Um, and it, it came, it was also apparent, I know Maureen, you were on the meeting last, yesterday, and it was very apparent too. Because the amount of effort that Brian and Beth put into the memo for the select board to sign. Um. And they talked a lot, and Brian, you were on the call, but they talked a lot about Beth, but Brian did a tremendous amount of work on that as well, which pulled him away from other things, when the planning board, um, not, the veil is very critical as well, it's, we just, it, things are coming in and out and the the needs of other boards are prioritizing our staff in some ways, and as I don't think any of us would say, no Brian, don't, don't do the veil, don't help with that or anything, it's just well, then we go to town meeting and our budget got cut and sliced, and we were the only border committee who really got sliced. And so it's very, and, but then, then they keep coming in to use and not provide Brian the support staff, so the administrative staff could get done. So I, it is, that's where the explosion is about to just take out, and I don't, and it's a catch twenty-two, cause we go, we go to the select board and say, you know, we can't keep having you do this, or the town manager's office. But then it doesn't get done, or it's not done. The, cause Brian is so well-informed on this topic, I, not, it can't, it doesn't get done. And then it just hurts everyone, it's just, it's just this circular thing that we can't get ourselves out of, and I, I, we've been trying, if you have ideas on how to do it. Um, and I know, and Brian, I don't wanna speak for you either, but I also know that you like doing a lot of these projects. Um, but it's, it, you don't have the support staff, so there's certain parts of this component where you could be able to do it. But you don't have the support staff to take out the other things to give you more bandwidth in the whole whole, whole picture, and so I, I don't know, it's, I think it's a conversation that, um, uh, we need to have maybe Brian, Lisa and I need to meet again and have a meeting, and that's the only way to deal with it, and, um.
Heather, that sounds good, thank you very much, and I do think, um, anything beyond I, I think, you know, a few hours here, a few hours there, or, you know, whatever, a couple hours of tasks that were I mean, we look for information too, it might be from conservation, it might be from the building department. But anything that goes beyond a couple of hours really should come back to the chair and the board. Um, I just don't think we can take on these jo, large jobs without at least the board being aware of it and wondering whether that fits under our boards, um, what our board needs to get done.
Brian, did you, are you okay with that? Do you wanna do that? And have a.
No, it's certainly meeting, meeting with Lisa, um, about, uh, responsibilities, um, that totally makes sense. Um, you know, these um, this, this specific grant and others have, you know, they, they've certainly been on um, the week, you know, the weekly updates for a while, but we haven't had time to carve out things, and a lot of the time, especially during these, right now, there's obviously more available grants for certain things, so there's, there's a lot more grant writing right now, simply because a lot of people need money, uh, including the town, obviously, um, so, but I'm happy to have the conversation, um, and, yeah.
Well, could I make a suggestion in this particular case? Uh, Brian, did you, were you the one who, um, was the primarily the grant writer for this grant?
Yeah, and there was not, there was not a lot of writing with this particular grant, um, at all, uh, there was, um, out of all the there was, there's been about three grants that I've been, um, a part of.
Well.
And there wasn't much, for putting this one in, this was, this was, there wasn't a lot of writing, it was kind of more, more math, it was like, it was like two hours, it was nothing, you know.
Right, but I'm, I'm looking at a, you know, if, if, and I think that we do want the planning board to be involved in economic development. It's just that, you know, if we look at the tasks associated with this grant, there's the writing the grant, and then there's the, um, managing the grant. And in my mind, um, the managing of the grant is, as Maureen pointed out, more of a administrative clerical thing, which is something that town hall can handle. Which doesn't, th, those are, your particular skills aren't required in order to manage the grants unless you think there's something particular. I mean, your skills are in terms of, I think, being a planner, not being a manager of grants.
Sure, I mean, I think, um, you know, Lisa is very, you know, um, I think, I, I think we just need to get her office involved and she's obviously all, all for economic development, what she can do, so we'll have that conversation and.
Yeah, cause I'm, I'm, I personally am happy for you to be involved in the procurement of grants, because I think it's important that your input be in, in, as to which grants we apply for and how we assemble the, the packet for the grants, but after that I think that it should no longer be a planning board um, prerogative, cause then it's, it's, it's town administrative staff, so, that's my view on it.
Okay, so Brian, on our to-do for, um, this week, you and I will set up a meeting to have, uh, with Lisa to just kinda go over. And maybe we can just set up a process, um, for those requests to come in from the department, of the department. We'll, we'll talk, we'll figure it out and then meet with Lisa, so, um, I'm gonna add that to our to-dos and, um, I'm gonna go back to the end of our meetings where we, uh, everything that everyone's gonna do, um, at the end of our meeting to do a recap of everyone's to-do, so I'm adding that, I'm starting a to-do list. Um, and that's one of them, so, uh, other updates, Brian?
Um. Uh, no, um, no, not at the moment.
Okay.
Oh, hang on, hang on, cause there's one I wanted to pick up on. Um, so Brian, you and John Clemson and Claire Dempsey met with alliances at eighty-eight Harvard.
Correct, last week.
And so after that, you sent us your update, and so that sounds like it went well, but I did raise the question about whether the land adjacent to it, um, there was some enthusiasm expressed for building a second house. But the idea that it could require a variance is, it's not really a variance. And I think the board and you should, it would help if, um, everybody understands what a variance is used for under state law.
Correct, so we were gonna, um, have, uh, Anderson and Krieger look at, uh, specifically the Seven Grove decision. Um, to look at how that, um, uh, worked out in terms of the only way you can give a variance under Massachusetts general law is based upon the shape, topography or soils of the lot. And how that specific lot is different from all the ones in the neighborhood. Um, so with that, in the take of Seven, Seven Grove, really, it was very clear, clear that a house was, um, constructed uh, be, in order to save the historic resource, and everyone, um, and I, I would imagine most people agreed that this was uh, a good, a great way to save the house, but it's a question of, is that an actual variance, correct, Maureen? That's just, I'm just making your point a little.
I think.
Right, correct, yeah.
It's very concerning to go down the path of, uh, repeatedly asking the zoning board to provide a variance when it has nothing to do with shape, soil, and fill in the blank for me?
Topography.
Topography. Um, at the same time, um, I did send this just to you and John Clemson, but there are um, various examples of types of bylaws communities have enacted to provide waivers from the zoning. And if the alliances would want to wait and work with us, we could certainly look at one of those, we'd have to work pretty quickly. But the examples are there, of, uh, many neighboring communities do have, um, these bylaws and get one in front of fall town meeting. And that would enable us to, um, for the alliances as petitioners to, uh, uh, get a waiver to build on that, um, adjacent lot, which would be a substandard, or whatever, a non-conforming lot. But that's the only way, otherwise, in addition to the rear, um, should, the alliances should be encouraged to pursue it. But if you feel that you need to go to, um, Anderson and Krieger for a, um, whatever, and, or what, and a reading of the ZBA's last, uh, ruling, then I'm, certainly that's fine with me, but what would you recommend, Brian?
Uh, I was picking up that that's what you had wanted.
No, I think it's clear that was, that's not how a variance is, I mean, it is clear, it's very clear, you're clear, I'm clear. It's not, a variance isn't the right tool for this.
I would be interested in exploring, um, the waiver.
Oh, that's.
I would as well.
Let's do it.
Can, I think we can get legal helping on us, though.
Well, yeah, Maureen, you're just talking about a, a blanket waiver for dimensional requirements.
I sent you a link, um, as I said, and, uh, John, it's the, it's the standard, it's like a booklet, it's PDF. But it's a booklet that, um, Massachusetts Historical Commission puts out, I think it's got, you know, it's been updated a zillion times. I did send you the link, I can send it to everybody again, and it's a section in that, it's all about all types of bylaws, including, of course, demolition to life. But a zillion different things, um, for preservation in Massachusetts. And one of the, um, one of the sections, uh, calls out different types of bylaws that can be used to uh, waive, um, zoning for, to preserve a historic resource, and specifically waive dimensional requirements.
Uh, I would totally be for something like that.
Are we talking about so they can put a single-family house next to it?
That's correct, yeah, hi Heather, yep.
Just making sure I remembered the email, right?
Did I copy everyone? I can't recall.
No, you did not.
Okay, it's a, it is, it's a, as I say, it's the, I'll send it, it's easy though, it's right out there, and it's Mass Historical Commission's, um, booklet on preservation.
Um, so for me, that's, that's an e, uh, if it makes sense, um, you know, for the specific site, I'm all for using some type of historic resource, you know, to save a historic resource in order to have a potentially, you know, non-conforming lot, if it makes sense for the street.
What's wrong with the lot now?
Um, it's, it's not large enough, uh, for to ha, it's not eleven thousand square feet. Um, so it can't even put a duplicate, actually, it would, um, it needs to go to. So it can't even put a duplex. It actually, it would, it needs to go to the ZBA in order to just even do a duplex there. But they were, they were deciding, they're like, well, what do you want us to do? Well, you know, if you guys want smaller housing, like, we can put a single family here, or if you want, we can put a duplex. And then you're looking, we're looking at the street. And if you look at the whole street, the idea of putting a duplex there, although it might be legal, it's a very, it's a very large, it would be a very wide, long structure. And it just wouldn't make a lot of sense. And he's happy to make small housing. It's like, it's, it's not happening all the time. So he's like, kind of like, okay, well, I'll go to the planning board and I'll say, do you want this duplex? And I can just go to the ZBA for as a normal, pre-existing non-conforming. Or here's a bungalow, a single family right next door, you know, maybe 2,400, you know, 12 over, 1,200 square foot footprint that makes sense. It looks, basically looks the same scale as every other house on the street. The house is, sorry, the lot is just under 11. I think it's just under, under maybe even nine, but it's very wide. So it actually would not be right on top of each other.
So my concern with this, and while I completely agree that this is an interesting approach to this, my concern is, of course, the loopholes that this will create in terms of how we handle similar sized lots, and whether we're now going to find developers are using the historical building as a leverage to put structures in that ordinarily we would think were inappropriate.
We wouldn't want to do that, but we could, we could save, we could save a house and allow a small structure based upon.
Yeah, so I.
That it makes sense.
I, I agree that this certainly is a, an instance where we want to do something special to save the structure. I'm coming at this from, from, one is knowing that developers will find ways to to use the zoning in ways that we didn't intend. And that's always a concern. The other is that we have additional reasons why we may want to allow other housing on such lots, which don't have to do with historical, saving of historical resources, but for instance, to put in smaller housing for, say, eighty years. And so I think that we have to be careful how we approach this, that A, we don't create a precedence for something we can't control, and also that we do it in such a way that it allows us to perhaps extend the same sort of access to building for other uses that we consider valuable to the town.
Yeah, this is kind of similar to Diab's point, but being a neighbor of the Grove Street houses where this has happened twice and, you know, could happen again. It's not great to lose the open space and features of historic houses that get chopped off and other houses squeezed in. Harvard Street is different, but I don't know that we want to say we love that idea of like squeezing in more high-end housing.
It was only at the risk of the loss, but I can understand the point.
Yeah, I, I think we should definitely look at this in great detail, so that we understand what the trade-offs are. Because nothing will be perfect.
That's true. There's also language that we probably, and Art can help us, that can be added in there to keep the rhythm of the street and the, the rhythm of the open space as well in that, in offering that waiver, that they need to maintain that consistency. Especially, and it mainly, I see the big issue is not in the bigger lots, but actually in more of the, the 6,500 lots right now that are, there are some fairly large lots tucked in there, but a lot of those lots are non-conforming currently as they are. And so we have big chunks of that that are small lots all tucked in, which is pretty similar to what's going on in Harvard Street. So anyway, I think the language when we look at it and stuff, so we'll add that to our list of things to research and to look at and discuss in more depth.
Well, I can just, thank you, everybody. I'll just send the link again to the, and give you the site, the pages that are relevant. And they do call out certain, it mentions specific communities, and I think Concord and Lexington are in there. Then maybe Brian can see what they've got. I'm sure it's a real quick, check it out online and circulate a couple of examples. But I think if, to just be honorable toward Mr. Lyons and his son, that we'd also want to see, let them know. We, and maybe we want to go forward anyway, maybe we don't with a bylaw in the Fall Town Meeting, but that's not till November. So whether he wants to just proceed with an addition to the back, or whether he, which he could do, because it's, you know, it's a two-family with a special permit, he could, and we, if we support it, he could go forward. And, or alternatively, wait and if he wants to put up a second house, see what we can do for Fall Town Meeting.
With that, who is liaison to the Historical Commission right now?
Me. It's Maureen.
Oh, Maureen, can you please make sure you touch base with Jack? To, him on this, and I'm happy to, that if the planning board wants to take the lead and bring the Historical Mission in, or vice versa, if they want to take the lead and we support them. But I think it'll move faster if we actually do it right now.
I agree.
Yeah.
And we would like to get it on for Fall Town Meeting if we can consider it.
Oh, definitely.
I would like the planning board to consider it for Fall Town Meeting if we can, and everything works and all the pieces come together, obviously. If they don't, that's a different discussion, but.
And then just as a follow-up, would that be of any interest or of any use, do you think, on Main Street? Is it 910?
Yes, yes, it would be. Because the parking lot would be broken off, and they could get a second, second, second building in there. Right, Brian?
I'll, I'll look into that. That, that, I don't think, for some reason, I'm not thinking that that's such a straightforward question.
There's a parking, there's a parking issues, but the.
Yeah, yeah, well, I just, I don't have enough info. I, I can't.
Yeah, off the top of your head, that's fine. Okay, um, let's, let's move on. We're actually behind schedule by about twenty minutes, a little bit more than that. So let's go to our ZBA petitions. We can pick up some of this stuff. We'll be picking up in our FY21 agenda items and also new business. So we'll come back to that. But I know there's a bunch of people on here who are looking for the ZBA petitions for us to run through those to listen to what we have to say and what Brian has to say. So we're going to start with 78 Sylvester Avenue for number 3907, ZBA petition. 78 Sylvester Avenue is for a special permit from Section 3.5.7. Kick us off, Ryan.
So yeah, I was gonna talk real quick. And then if you are, if the petitioner is, is here for 78 Sylvester Ave, if you could either raise your hand or somehow in the chat box, let me know. And then we'll turn it over to you before going to the planning board. So 78 Sylvester Ave, so this is for 357 to demolish a pre-existing non-conforming single family located in a lot that does not meet the frontage and lot with requirements. And to construct a new single-family dwelling that will be located closer to the front and side property lines than permitted as of right. So the Historical Commission voted no adverse impact on historic resource for the special permit application at their meeting on June 29. So this is a one-story house is to be demolished. It was, and a one and a half story house will be built on the existing foundation with a 28 by 10 addition built to the rear of the building. So it's an extremely interesting and fun house, not something that you normally see, I think, just walking around. It's, it's nothing other than a, it's a, it's a very fun house. I hope to see more houses like this that embrace the character and specifically the scale of all these Winchester neighborhoods. To have a new building at one and a half stories on a foundation that's, that's slightly enlarged in this area really does make kind of sense. So I, I happily recommend favorable action, again, action with regards to this petition. It looks like the petitioner, Jamie Dival, is here. I think I'm just going to turn it over to Jamie. Jamie, if you need anything in terms of plans, let me know. But I want you to go right ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. You're welcome to put it up on the screen, or if people have their packets, that's cool. I just wanted to clarify one thing, and I really appreciate your endorsement, Brian. But the 28 by 10 addition on the back actually is already there, and we're tearing it off. It's like a lean-to ferret emporium. And the addition is actually going to be a bit narrower than what's on the back and extend one foot eight inches out. So what is termed a 28 by 10 foot addition isn't really, it's already there, other than one foot eight extending into the backyard. I also wanted to say the garage will be somewhat smaller than what is shown on the plot plan. It will be 14 by 20. So any numbers you see about permeable or green space will only improve. And the house reflects the client, Ellen Wilson, who has a great vision and has, yeah, it's been just a pleasure to work with her. I think the front porch is one thing that's not conforming. The current front porch extends out seven feet two inches, as does the new front porch, which extends over the, across the front. And although it has no particular style, it picks up on a lot of the vernacular of Winchester, including the porch supports, which you can find on Robert Coate Homes. The brackets, heavy trim, two-inch sills. Yeah. And then I'm sure everyone's curious about the cupola. It is, that was Ellen. Ellen wanted a cupola, and it's great. At first I resisted. But it's fantastic, I think, in terms of getting light down into a great living space. Exhausting hot air in the summer, they're operable windows. And then also she plans to put like a Meridian star in the cupola. So it adds character, but I think it still fits with the neighborhood. So if you have any questions or concerns, or Ellen, if you want to say anything, that's cool. The wood, the front will be shiplap. So it'll have more of a smooth finish, sort of like the Greek Revivals, or some of the older houses in town with clapboard sides. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, hi, hi, everybody. This is Ellen. Jamie and I have sort of designed this house just by walking around the whole town and stealing ideas from other houses. So I'm very proud of her design.
Is there any comments from engineering? I see that Beth Rudolph, a town engineer, is on the call.
Brian reviewed this. He was, the stormwater design was, was fine. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Brian she's referring to is a Brian in engineering, not Brian, our town planner. There's, there's two Bryans. Everyone, it wasn't Brian from planning that reviewed the stormwater. It was Brian from engineering. Thank you, Beth, for that. Members of the planning board, you want to go around and give your feedback? Or any comments?
Well, I, I will start off, if I may. I live on Canal Street, just a couple of blocks from there. And when I first heard that the building was being torn down, I was very concerned. It's a very tight space to build something in. The homes are close together. They are of moderate sizes. And honestly, I'm thrilled at this design. It'll be a great addition to the neighborhood, and it maintains the scale of the streetscape, which is great.
I'm hoping that they will like me as much as my house.
Well, you're, you're off to a good start.
Thank you.
Well, I'll jump in. It's Maureen. Nicely scaled, nicely detailed. I think it's a good addition. I'll recommend favorable action.
Heather Hannan?
Yeah, I thought, I really liked the scale. I think it's also really fun, like Brian said, and I thought it looked great.
I, I agree. It's, it's pretty, it's in scale, it has the character and the materials and stuff in the neighborhood. Thank you for your information as well, Jamie, on that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I would like to entertain a motion if the planning board, a member of the planning board, like to make one.
I'll make a motion then for recommend favorable action to the ZBA.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we want to discuss?
Nope.
All right. Let's go around and roll call vote, please.
Curious, aye.
Meister, aye.
Hannan, aye.
Von Maring, aye. Motion passes 4-0 with Craig absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.
Bye. Bye.
All right. So let's move on to 77 Woodside Avenue, number, petition number 3908. And this one is for a special permit from Section 3.5.5. Brian?
Sorry about that. 3908, 77 Woodside. So this is a 355 special permit from Section 355, so it's to be permitted to construct an addition that will be located close to the side property lines and permitted as of right. It's located in the RDB zoning district and contains 6,300 square feet. The home was built in the mid 1920s. The Historical Commission voted no adverse impact on historic resource at their meeting in June 29. So the proposal entails a removal of a rear deck with masonry, and then a second-story addition with a new rear deck over an existing sunroom. No non-conformities are becoming worse as a result of this proposal. Much of the addition will not be seen from the street. The scale and the character appear to keep at the house and the neighborhood, and I recommended favorable action with regards to this petition. Is the petitioner from 77 Woodside here? I believe they.
Yes, we're here.
There you are. I'll bring up the application, but why don't you go right ahead?
Great. Well, thank you, guys, for taking the time to take a look at our petition and for that summary. As you said, we're applying for the, or the permit is because we need to be closer to the left property border on our existing non-conforming structure. Just to give you a little background about us, we've lived in Winchester. We moved here eight years ago. We've got three young kids. Our house is right near Lynch, which is where all of our kids go to school. But we've outsized our homes. We're hoping to make it a little larger so we can stay in the neighborhood that we love. This addition that we proposed, we actually did it to all be done by right. A permit was issued by the town on May 5. And it was only after we had started, had fully excavated the project, that our surveyor realized he had made a five-foot error in measuring the frontage of our property. So we realized what we thought was seventeen feet from our left-sided border is actually only 12, which is what's prompting us going through this process. So basically, everything is exactly the same as what was permitted by the town on May 5. We're just applying for the, the special permit. So you can see the, the addition there. That's the rear view with the deck and the existing part to the far left is, is already there. We're just building a little bit on top of it. But our, and I think our architect guy Dixon is on the call as well to answer any of the more technical questions, perhaps, that we can't answer. But we did want you to know sort of the backstory of how we find ourselves here. So we actually now have, we got permission from Al with the Building Department. Actually, when we found the error, we stopped immediately because I mean that we weren't by right anymore. But we did have to pour the slab and the supporting walls and footing, or else we were told our house was going to potentially slide away while going through this whole process. So we look out our window at a concrete slab now. But happy to answer any, any questions or have our architect weigh in as needed. I'm going to switch over to Beth Rudolph real quick for her feedback. And then we'll open up to the planning board if they have questions. Sound good? Great, thanks. Yeah. Beth, do you have your feedback from your department?
Yeah, I think Brian just received some updated information, I want to say late Friday or yesterday, and hasn't had a chance to look at it yet, but he'll look at it later this week.
Thank you, Beth. I, I had a couple of questions that I just, and I know a DMA actually asked this as well. In the pictures is a birch.
In the pictures, there's a birch tree on the side. Are you losing that birch tree or is it already gone?
It's gone. I will tell you honestly, it was half-dead. So regardless of this process, we needed to take it down, but it is gone.
And the chimney, is the chimney coming out?
No, it's not being touched.
Okay. Mr. Dixon, you missed that on your drawings.
Detail oriented, very good.
Members of the planning board, do you have questions?
Well, I actually have a couple that you didn't catch, Heather. So first I note that there is, as far as I could tell, there's no existing elevation of the rear of the building. So what we're seeing right now is the, the planned building from the rear. There are just some photos of the rear. And my concern here is that this building is similar to several we've seen in the past, where it's built on a slope, so that if you look at the front of the building, you don't recognize, you know, the front looks like it's like one and a half-story small building. And then you're building down a slope. And so from the rear, you're seeing a three-story building. And we've had a couple of homes where we've worked with them to, in one case, it was on, I think it was on Winter Pond, where we just flat out said that it was just too much like a three-story building and it was on a public way because of the water. In your case, you do have a butter on, I think it's Brentwood.
Yep.
And so I understand why you're doing what you're doing, but I don't know what its impact is on the butter in terms of, do they see a three-story building or not? And if, there are some places around town where there's just been some egregious examples of rear, you know, butters to the rear seeing three or four-story tall structures because of the drop-off. And so I understand that you're here only because of a several-foot change in where your property line, where you thought it was, or whatever. But in my mind, if there's some way of making that, the rear elevation look less like three stories, I would be much happier about, about approving it. Or I shouldn't say approving, because we don't approve, but you know, giving it a positive response.
I'd like to think that we were sensitive to that in the way it was designed. It's challenging with the slope of our yard to not build something on that, on that bottom story to even, to support. I do hear what you're saying. I will say, we shared the plans with our neighbor Marie when we were just going for the initial, the initial planning, and she had no, certainly no issues with it. And then again, when we had to go through this process and the letters were being sent out, we revisited it with her just because we were anticipating. I don't know if it would be helpful to get a letter from her. There's a lot of large pine trees that obscure the view, so she's not looking at a, you know, a flat three-story wall. But I would welcome your thoughts on how we could mitigate that concern.
Yeah, so unfortunately, you might be able to get the letter from the current owner of that property, but obviously you can't get the letter from future owners who might say, wow, that's horrible, why didn't anyone approve that thing? It really affects our enjoyment of our property. So, well, I appreciate the effort you've taken in getting your, your neighbors' approval. In the grand course of things, the question is, how does it affect the property, you know, for future generations? So more importantly, I wonder, is the, is the butter at a much lower, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say the word altitude, I can't think of the right word right now. Are they down slope of view to a great deal? So if they look up and those trees are gone, would they, would it loom over them? Or is there a gully between you and their houses at the same level?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, like, they're not, they're not at the same level, but they're also not significantly down slope. So I'm not sure how to, how to, what the elevation difference would be between, say, our roof lines.
Yeah, because one of the things I wish that that had been part of your packet was, and I don't know how possible this was, was essentially give us a view of what your home looks like from the other property, so we could see what sort of impact it might have. I mean, you are, I think you're, you're a good, what, 40 feet between the homes at least? If I read it correctly, something like that?
Yeah, I have to look at, do you have the exterior photos that show? There's a view of the back of the house that I'm happy we have pulled up that I can screen share that does show what they look, I mean, unfortunately with, they're sort of looking at the whole backside of our house and porch and what was underneath it, probably regardless. And.
Might, might I interject for a moment, Guy Dixon here? There, there are existing condition photos as part of the package. They are in the ZBIA drawing plans package, so it's the last sheet in the drawing set. And I'd also like to, to address the, the concern about three, the three-story by definition, and that definitely was, concern was taken into, taken into account with this application. And as you can see on the submitted basement plan, I believe there's a separate basement plan. And I did a breakdown of the calculation. So I did indeed define that this basement is a basement because over 50% is underground. So that calculation was done.
Actually, I think that's a cellar, isn't it?
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, I'm confusing cellar with basement. Go continue, please, my apologies.
Yeah, it's my understanding from the building department, which I wanted to make clear to the building department that we were not, that we were not indeed by definition building a three-story addition here. And the way to, to prove that to the building department, they require that a calculation is done that shows that more than 50% of the basement is indeed covered by the ground. And that calculation was done and submitted as part of this application.
Oh, I, I, I don't doubt that it was. My, my, my issue is not with the technical definition of the basement, but whether how it's perceived by the butter, because one of the things that the special permit does look at is whether it fits in with how it affects the butters in terms of scale and character.
Yes.
And, and so I understand you've done your best and I believe you that it's really only a two-story thing, but to the butter, it may look like three stories, and that's certainly something we need to worry about.
I think there's a photograph, there should be a photograph in that set, last page, if you scroll all the way down. It appears, no, you know what? You're looking at a set that was submitted to the building department originally. That's not the ZBIA, ZBIA set that, that you're looking at. There's another set.
Brian, if you look at the one where, that was sent out to the planning board that has it in there.
Well, we have the rear elevations and, Dea, to your point about it looking like one big massing, the basement level reads as its own story, like it has a roof, which helps break it up.
Yeah, that's correct, Heather. That, that was an intention of mine in the design process. Otherwise, the rear really would look like three stories. In fact, it would have looked like a rocket, which was why I was trying to prevent from happening. And that's part of the reason why I have this, the hipped roof that you see on that one-story projection.
Yeah, that one. Yeah, I think that helps a lot.
It helps break up the verticality of the mass. And, and if you look, if you scroll down and see the photograph below of the existing, oh, and if you could see the photo, yes. You can see that really the finished grade at the rear of the house proposed has not really changed at all. In fact, what you're seeing instead of these vertical boards underneath that, that rear deck skirt is now just going to be the structure that you see that I've designed as the hipped roof. So in terms of three, in terms of 3D massing, I would, I would say that, that really there, there is no significant change of new, from the existing in terms of exposure from the, from the grade at the rear of the house. You, you follow what I'm trying to get at?
I, I understand what you're saying. My concern is that the, the, the 3D models you show at the top of this figure are all taken from a bird that's flying at essentially at roof level, not taken from the perspective of the butter who is down grade. So certainly the photographs certainly are more from that perspective.
Would it, would it help you if I did a screen share and opened the actual 3D model and showed you from, I could show the model from any view that you wish?
I'm only one member of the planning board, so why don't I shut up now? And see if the other members, if they don't have similar concerns, let's not waste any more time. So I'll, I'll just, I'll just stop and let the next person take over.
I thought the back was fine. I was more concerned about the impact on the property to the left, on the left elevation, because that whole massing is new, right? So it's a little, a little closer to them than it's supposed to be, and it's quite large. But I thought the design overall was nice.
Maureen?
I'm fine with it, thank you.
I, Dea, I understand where your, your thought process is going on the back. It, it is a walkout basement. So when you have a walkout basement, it's gonna read like that a lot of times. There, the one thing that the architect could have done to help it read more as the grade, the basement grade, is the finish, change the finish of that one, you know, the, the hip roof section and stuff, to change the material to make it read like the basement, but I'm not bothered by it. That's just a, a small design thing that would have helped it read more as a, the lower region of the basement. But I'm, I'm fine with it the way it is. Looking at the overall, the majority, as the architect pointed out, the majority of that story is embedded into, it really is the basement. The calc's also showed as well. In the previous one where the planning board did it, it actually went down a whole nother story, I believe. It's where it is, it actually had four stories. And that is where we really, that was, that's not a walkout at that point. But I feel that it's embedded enough into the land, into the earth, and that it's a walkout basement from my perspective. I think they did a nice job with the roof to blend that in. So I, I, I think overall it's a good solution and I don't, I, I don't have any problems with it.
Okay, then, I, I don't need to make any further comments, so.
Did someone want to do a motion?
I will, I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on this petition. 77 Woodside Road.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, a second.
I'd like to discuss it, just to make sure that we include a note that we would like the engineering's review feedback taken into consideration as we didn't have engineering's feedback for our meeting.
Well, I'd certainly support that, so what, you need that added?
Yeah, would you, would you be willing to amend your motion?
I will. So I'd like to recommend favorable action subject to the endorsement, really, of the engineering department.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
That is Heather Hannan. Want to discuss? All right, roll call vote?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome, Beth. Roll call vote?
Meister, aye.
Hannan, aye.
Von Marying, aye. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Von Marying, aye.
Curious, aye.
Motion passes 4-0 with Craigor absent. Let's go to 326 Highland Avenue. That is petition number 3909. The petitioner is seeking a site plan review under section 9.5.1. Brian? When you're ready, get everything on set.
So this is for site plan review under 951. So it's to be permitted to construct in addition that will be less than 500 square feet, but the total floor area is already greater than 5,000 square feet. So the property is located in RDB and contains 26,106 square feet. Historical commission voted no adverse impact on the historic resource, which in this case would be the neighborhood at their meeting on June 29th. This proposal is to construct a two-story addition with a net increase of 488 square feet to the side of the house. All the requirements are conforming pre as well as post-construction. It's a pretty interesting and it's an exquisite house. And the addition is keeping with the character and the materials. If you have the opportunity to go by this, I'd say to take a look. No adverse impact on the neighborhood, and therefore I recommend a favorable action with regards to this petition. If the petitioner for 326 Highland Ave is here, would you please either raise your hand or you can chat to me and can, if you have a chance to speak? Hello, Fulton?
Yes, this is, this is the architect working with the Andersons?
Yes, that's right, yes, why don't you go right ahead?
Okay, excellent, thank you. If we're, this is one of the, I think, great homes in Winchester. It's, I mean, it's, it's a little bit of collectican styles, I think, the architect pulled details from a number of places and really, I think, had a lot of fun in the design. We're proposing a 12-foot-two-by-21-foot-six addition in the rear. It'll replace a small porch and existing mudroom. The idea is to expand the existing kitchen. The kitchen itself is now sort of in, kind of a postmark kitchen, and there's been very little of historical details within the kitchen. Then off the kitchen, a kind of a modest family room. The family long-term is planning to develop the basement, and there's the existing stair, off, basement stair off the rear entry is full of winders and quite narrow. So the goal was to get a, a legal stair down. We're taking out an existing bulkhead, so that'll be replaced with, you know, a small landing that you can access from the exterior and drop down in the basement from the outside. On the second floor, we're adding a master closet and master bath facing back towards the garage. In terms of materials, we're matching, we're going in with cedar shingles, architectural shingles on the roof. The windows are Marvin, SDLs with spacer bars, concrete foundation, the exterior trim will be PVC composite raptor tails to kind of keep the existing details going, and then cedar brackets along the way. I think that's basically it. I mean, we tried to keep, maintain the scale and materials and some of the style and scale going on with the existing home. Thanks.
Thank you. Beth? From engineering, did you have any comments?
So the applicant engineer did a soil test out there last week, which Brian witnessed, but we haven't received any formal drainage until middle beyond that. So I hope that we'll get some additional material at some point.
Thank you, Beth. Members of the planning board?
I had no problems with this one.
Heather, Maureen?
I didn't have any issues with it, assuming the materials and the detailing is matching.
Maureen?
Well, it's, I'm sure I'll vote to endorse it and it'll, it's fine. But I just want to point out, if you go to, can you, Brian, can you bring up A4? That's one page that would help me. So A4.
One more.
Yeah, so there we are. Just the west elevation, you see how, there's the addition. It's just my, I, I just have to get it out there. And so I understand you're trying to wedge in a new staircase and a whole bunch of other stuff. And I actually, maybe this was COVID-19 Saturday night here, but I'm staring at these plans. And when you look at that addition, it just, it's like this tractor trailer. The trailer's stuck on the side of the building. I will say, it's the side, it's not the front elevation. But I just was wondering, in the end, what I would do. And I would be, I know what would help a lot is if, you can see on the, I believe the, is, am I correct, Fulton, that the roof will actually drop a bit at the, for the addition?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, that's correct. So we tried to squeeze it in a little bit and make it a little bit narrower, but still maintain our connections we were trying.
So it just, it would be more logical to have a bit of a jog and a re, a bit of a recess plane. You're gonna be pouring a concrete foundation anyway. Even six inches would give you some shadow and break up that tra, uh, trailer look of the, um, of that elevation. It's the side elevation and nobody's gonna care. I'm, I'm done. But that's what I, I would have tried to do that. Just, um, it's a, it's just an aesthetic thing.
Right. So similar to the east elevation. There's that, there's the break you're asking for on the west elevation on the east side.
Um, it is, what can I say? It's an addition and, um, it's a big house. It's the whole purpose of this review. And one thing that helps when you've got a really big house is to break up the masses. So, and it doesn't take much, but anyway, um, that's fine. What, you, go back, if you think there's some merit to the comment, um, you might look at it. That's all.
You, you're right, Maureen. So you can actually see it on the west elevation where you have your foundation lines are coming in. You can see that you want to draw that break right there in that elevation that that's like a dead spot. And there's so much movement to this building, uh, the architectural, uh, the historical, that you kind of almost want to set that break just a little bit to give it the shadow line. So design-wise, yes.
And I have to say, there are a couple of these additions, and they are on front elevations in my neighborhood. And I have to say, the neighbors did notice. They said, wow, why didn't they just set it back like four inches, six inches, Fulton? And Heather, you would know more, which is the right dimension, but it wouldn't take much. Um, anyway, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you, Maureen. I think it would look nicer and it would read more as an addition.
Um, I, I don't think it holds up the, uh, recommending, uh, on my part, favorable action on it. I just think that the homeowners and the architect may want to look at that. Because it's, it is something small, but it'll have a huge impact to that elevation and really make it much more elegant. Um, but for overall, I think it's, it's not, um, something that bears the weight for our purposes. This is my feeling right now.
Right. I agree with you.
Like to entertain a motion if someone is interested?
Um, I, I don't mind. I'll do it. Uh, I will recommend favorable action.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Um, I'm gonna discuss it because I would like to add again, the engineering review be taken into consideration.
You have to give us a, give us a, whatever. Get, get us off to a running start. Give us a clue ahead of time. Um, so I recommend favorable action, um, as subject to the, uh, endorsement of the engineering department.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Maureen, aye.
Hannah, aye.
Curious, aye.
Von Mary, aye. Motion passes four oh with Betsy Craigor absent. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming. The applicants and the architects for those Z B A petitions. We're gonna move onward to the veil. One moment, let me just get my papers in order here to move onward to the veil. Okay. Um, Brian, do you want to kick off and give an overview, uh, update of where everything is, um, at this point? Beth also, if Beth is here too, she can give it because she, she was, uh, she was on vacation. So whatever, either one of you, if you want to give the planning board update?
Um, sure. There's also, um, there's some other members of, uh, that, uh, of the community that, that did, um, attend some meetings that, um, our council attended, but that we did not. So there, um, I wasn't sure if we wanted to set out the format for what we're gonna be talking about the veil. I was gonna kind of introduce where we are at the moment, but then I didn't know. I think it'd be good to just kind of set out what, what the plan is for, for the, the night in terms of if there's going to be public comments, if there's not, uh, when that will be. Um, so that'll help me kind of organize people that want to talk and, uh, we can go from there.
As we, the planning board left it in our updates from our last meeting, what the plan was for this evening was to review the letter that the select board sent on behalf of the town and either add to it, uh, support it, or subtract from it. Um, and send our own independent letter at this point. With, um, my discussion with the select board last night and their meeting going forward, if the planning board is interested in uh, giving, uh, voting to support me going ahead to sign those letters and just, um, with Brian and I writing those letters with the, on behalf of the town and signing it on behalf of the planning board, I'm happy to do it. I'm not sure if we can meet the select board's schedule. They're meeting twice a week and they're pumping a lot of stuff out and signing a lot of stuff and getting it out quickly, that we can meet that schedule unless we do it that way. Or we can, or continue to go the route we're taking this evening to review. And then either send a separate letter and write a second, secondary letter. Uh, but the plan was to review that. Um, I, I did ask in our last meeting, um, for, I know that the neighborhoods, I have all joined together that are impacted, multiple neighborhoods are impacted by this project, and they have all joined together. Um, and if there was something that they felt was missing or something too, please let us know. But it wasn't, um, we, we have been following it for some time and we got a huge packet of all the information to, for us to go through. And so my intention is the chair was not to have a huge discussion on, this is more to discuss what is the best thing for us to send in the letter at this point, um, to support our, our residents the best that we can.
Um, all right. So the, the one update that's important, um, uh, the, the most important update, when, when these actually were being heard. So they were gonna be, um, tonight, uh, at, at some point. And it was possible that there was going to, that they were gonna be open. Then from the twenty-first, we had heard that there's going to be special permit hearings sometime between now and August third. Um, that, sorry, not hearings, there's special permit commission, uh, meetings that are going to be reviewing these two special permits. But now we just found out, and this is the letter from the attorney who represents, um, LCS Woburn and Pulte Homes, that, uh, it has been requested to have the public hearings be continued to September eighth. So that is the next time that these two special permits are going to be before, um, the Woburn City Council. That gives us enough time. I know that, um, uh, the town engineer, um, has, is organizing, uh, I believe, um, in, uh, our own peer review to look at the stormwater, uh, so that, I don't know if that gives us enough time. We can let, um, Beth quickly talk about that. But, um, other than that, um, that is, that is by far the, the biggest, um, why don't I, well, Beth, why don't, why don't you go right ahead and see, um, talk about the peer review for stormwater related to the hearing?
Sure. Yep. So I just wanted to mention, I think, um, between now and the September eighth city council meeting, that Woburn has, and I'm not entirely familiar with their permitting process, but it seems like they have like a internal subcommittee that reviews special permits who will be meeting between now and the September eighth meeting. I believe those are public meetings. I'm not sure if they actually take public comment, but, um, it's something that, um, members from the public or town, um, may be interested in attending to, to kind of keep up with the conversations that are happening in Woburn, um, before the next city council meeting.
They do say, they do say that you can, you, sorry, uh, they do say that you, um, that there, at times, there is public comment, um, at the, at that special permit, um, meetings. So that, um, according to Woburn, so just.
Yeah, I don't know what the schedule is for those meetings. Maybe that's something they'll discuss this evening that we can, we can find about, out about subsequently. Um, with respect to the peer reviews, the select board, um, voted last night to, um, to appear independent peer reviews by the town of Winchester with respect to the stormwater and flooding, and then also, I think it was energy and climate, um, and then wildlife habitat, which were some issues that were brought up by the concert, Winchester Conservation Commission. Um, I've requested, um, a proposal from Weston Sampson to do the stormwater peer review for the project. And I believe there'll be a separate group working together to put together the peer review, um, proposals for the other items that the Conservation Commission was interested in. So once we get that proposal back at the end of this week, then we'll go about figuring out how that that's gonna be funded, um, and then move forward with that, 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 uh, peer review work.
To add to that, last night, uh, council also said that those peer reviews that Winchester would like to have done are coming out of Winchester's pocket. We can't do it under fifty-three G as we are not the permitting the town or city, uh, Woburn's case permitting the project. So we can't go use fifty-three G to help do those peer reviews.
Correct. Yep.
Um, so.
With, with, so, um, I'd like, I think Anne Sarah and Dennis Colette are, are here to speak. I'm looking at who's here, and there's, I'm sure there's others as well. Um, I just wanted to ask them, is there things, um, that, um, that at this point they would like the planning board to do besides continue to support, um, all the peer reviews and, um, and makes then, then the select board? Well, Brian and, Brian and Beth's memo. So, uh, briefly, if those who are here on that, on that neighborhood, if you could just quickly comment on what you're, what you would like?
So this is Dennis. I'm gonna defer to Anne. Uh, Anne's been taking a, uh, incredible lead on this, uh, on this work for the neighborhood. So I'll just defer to Anne. And thank you, Anne.
Brian, can you pull up this like words memo?
You know, um, I'm very glad that everybody wrote the memo, but there were, um, four things in the memo that I think should be corrected. I have written my own explanation of, of why these need to be corrected. But in addition to those four things, there's a huge amount of things that the neighbors are looking for. Um, a large amount of them in a, in a, in a document that we threw together and people are free to put, put on their issues with the project. And I'm not so sure that, um, that these issues have been covered anywhere. Um, I, I don't, you know, know how to get these issues covered. So, um, so I, I wonder just some way of process. Do you want me to, to review maybe, um, the four things that I thought we could look at again, that were said in the slackboard memo that I, I think we might, uh, wanna review? And, uh, maybe look through this brainstorm memo for things that we haven't looked at before?
You say.
I don't know how you want to address this.
So the engineering components, typically the planning board would just support the engineering. So, um, in this, because that's not our, our expertise. So if they are.
I'm not talking about engineering. I, I'm talking about, for example, there was a request for, uh, pedestrian access at the end of Sunset. That, that really doesn't make a lot of sense. It doesn't add any benefit to the larger, to larger Winchester or to any other neighborhood at all. It would only benefit those people that live immediately near the end of Sunset, about twenty-five or thirty residents. And those particular residents feel that any benefit that they would get from being able to access townhomes, because they wouldn't really be able to access the commercial point of the veil. They would be accessing the townhomes. But any access that they would get wouldn't, would be to, totally overshadowed by people parking at the end of Sunset. So.
My apologies. Can you, can you bullet point the four items? Because I, I missed.
Let me get that.
Because you're broken and out.
Let me get these. Um, where am I gonna find them? So I didn't, I just, I, you have to, to bear with me here because I just don't, didn't know what you guys were really doing tonight. Um, so here I am. I'm gonna open, I, I'm confused because I'm trying to, to choose icons that are on Brian's screen, I think. So, um, uh, all right. So the, the one is the access at the end of Sunset. Um, okay, here's incorrect comments. Oh, I can't get it to come up. All right. This is gonna take me a while. Okay, so there's access at the end of Sunset. Um, there was uh, asking, oh gosh, come on. It's not, I'm, I'm not able to access my, my, the document that I own, that I wrote about this. It's not, I'm just not able to do it. Um, I have to be, I have to know what we're doing that night. Um, let me see. Yeah, it's not gonna come up. Yeah, I, I can't, I can't gain it. I can't access it. All right. So I'm gonna do this by memory. Um, there was the, um, and, and of the, end of the road, we don't want pedestrian access. There was a, a request for a sidewalk on the north side of Sunset. I think sidewalks in the entire Sunset neighborhood would be great, but ironically, the one sidewalk that cannot be built is the one that we requested, which is on top, uh, on the north side of Sunset. The entire thing is, um, wetlands. It's just really not possible to build that. So it, it, it also may have may been a request that was conflated with the idea that access at the end of Sunset might make sense, pedestrian access. And it also might have been conflated with the next bullet item, which was that, um, please study an alternate route for the bike path that goes along the Abrojona. An alternative, uh, route for the bike path was massively studied already in MIPA review. So that request of ours betrayed our ignorance of the MIPA review process. It also, and it also shows some, um, unfamiliarity with the area because again, there are massive wetlands between the end of a dirt road that is already existing next to the Abrojona. I think a lot of people thought that that went all the way up to the veil or to Mont Vale or something. It doesn't. It only goes a very short period, a relatively short period of the way. In order to actually get a bike path, you would have to do so much work, uh, wetlands destruction, et cetera, et cetera. I have a little paper that explains why these four items are wrong. And it, it says, look, maybe there's a way to, you know, resurrect this item, but also maybe the best thing to do here is say nothing. Just stop saying that this is a request. I don't know. This is up for you to, for you guys to make, but the request really doesn't make a lot of sense. They've already studied it. It's not able to be implemented. Um, lastly was there's this, the Anderson Krieger letter was excellent, but, um, failed, I think, to mention that the same argument that could be made about Forest Street should be also be made about Sunset. Uh, both the zoning in both, uh, areas are the same, and there can't be any access supported, uh, by the same, by Anderson Krieger's argument. Uh, that's missing. Um, and we also have some problem because, you know, back in MIPA, in the MIPA days, uh, our town, uh, was fully supportive of the Forest Road. I war, I was worried about that because I felt that it was important to make Anderson Krieger's argument that they've now made, but perhaps late, in order that we would gain some sort of a, um, power over to, in order to influence the project. So that, you know, they couldn't, Woburn couldn't just, uh, rail along and, and not, uh, pay attention to anything we said. But instead, we would have some project that they would have to, you know, say, well, we need Winchester, and that would be our power, our hold upon power. Um, so now we're in a problem where we, once Winchester said, oh, we support no access at Forest and all access, emergency and, and pedestrian anyway, at, at Forest. And now we seem to be saying, no, we want pedestrian at, at Sunset, and we want nothing at Forest. So we need to regroup here. And we do want no access at Sunset and emergency access at Forest. Um, in my letter, or I, I'm reviewing, is there anybody in the, um, greater neighborhood who has any opposition to emergency access at Forest? I don't know any of any at this time. I can imagine that we would maybe need to know what kind of, um, traffic there's gonna be. I mean, if it's gonna be every ten minutes, somebody is coming from the LCS. gonna be. I mean, if it's gonna be every 10 minutes, somebody is coming from the LCS to go to Winchester Hospital with the sirens on, that's one thing. If it's once a day or once a week, that's another thing. So, that's, I think, some information we, we should ask for. Um, and then, and then I think that's it with the four issues that I think need correction. I can't say-
Thank you, Anne. Um, the bike path also, if you go up over by the Wendy's in Woburn, the bike path takes you right there on the front side of the development.
Yeah, it's just, I've actually, in my paper, I've made many, many measurements. That's why it's taken me over a week to write this. And it goes over so many measurements and it shows, if you're from my house, for example, it's the same distance to get to, almost to the bike, to the veil as it is to get to the end of Sunset. That's how long Sunset is. People just don't appreciate that. And I think when these four issue, items were made, they were made without that kind of keen appreciation that the people have, familiarity that we have who really live here. For example, I literally walk around Sunset almost every day. So, I tend to not appreciate that other people don't know how hilly it is, how long it is. I sort of take that for granted. So, I probably am making the mistake of just saying, oh, well, that doesn't make sense and not explaining it. You know what I mean? So, I'm sorry for that. But, um, yeah, it really, it, I have many, many measurements now that show that there, whether you're coming from a Forest Circle, whether you're coming from my house, it doesn't matter where you're coming from. It adds very little, um, very li, it, it really doesn't help to, to make an access point at, at Forest Street. And it's, I mean, at, um, Sunset Street and in some, compared to an access point at Forest Street. And in some cases, it's worse. For example, if you were coming from, uh, Polk and Forest Circle and you wanted to go into the commercial area of the veil, you would add 50% in length and so, it have so many more grade changes if you try to get there via Sunset. So, it's really just, it really just doesn't make sense. And because that doesn't make sense, I don't think the sidewalk in the North Street Sunset makes sense either. So, there are just those four bullet points. But there are a lot of other things that I think we'd like too. And I haven't even reviewed them for a while.
Yeah. Um, Brian and Beth, in terms of the sidewalks on Sunset, have you looked at the layout of our, the property lines there for that sidewalk?
So, the, the town owns, um, I guess probably like a 40-foot right of way along Sunset Road. Um, and the intention would be the sidewalk would be constructed within the right of way. Um, I think the goal was to try to, and this was, these issues were raised by the town during the MIPA process. Um, uh, the goal was to try to make a connection. Along Sunset Road, there's been a lot of requests from the Sunset Road neighborhood to have a safer crossing or across Washington Street to get to the bike path. So, the goal was to try to get the, um, the developer for the veil complex to try to, um, improve the pedestrian access, um, along Sunset Road and then to add a crosswalk with like a flashing beacon, um, on Washington Street to provide that safe crossing to, to be able to access the bikeway, um, on the other side of, of Washington Street.
However, to get that, to get that as a option, you have to open Sunset for pedestrian from the veil?
No, not at all.
The veil, the veil, if we don't have any access on Sunset to the veil, to get the sidewalks and for the crossing at Washington Street for Sunset, it's not, it, it's not a fair request.
No, hold on. I, I disagree with that. Um, firstly, we, everyone in Sunset, in the Sunset neighborhood and everywhere else would like some method of crossing Washington Street. Uh, whether it comes from the veil or anywhere else, it, that makes sense. Um, that request also makes sense in, in, uh, context of the veil. Because the veil wants to, um, encourage pedestrian traffic to its site. That does not mean that the, that the pedestrian site, uh, traffic needs to, to go along Sunset to get there. In fact, I would argue that the people who will live in the townhomes wouldn't want a pedestrian access, uh, through their townhomes. They want the pedestrian access through the bike path. So, we make a, uh, crossing at Washington Street, which enables us all to use the bike path more effectively. And that helps, um, that helps Leggett with its, uh, determination that it's improving the bike path, because it's helping us to use the bike path to get to its development.
Right. But, but in order to get to the, the veil site on the current bike path, you have to go up Washington Street, go down D Street.
Everyone-
Uh, go up to the, if I could just finish, uh, go up and cross Mont Vale Ave and then go along the bike path parallel to Mont Vale Ave. So, I know there may be conflicting opinions about the request that was in both the MIPA letter the town sent and also the most recent one about trying to improve the bikeway access. But the original design for the bikeway, you know, 25 years ago was to have it go through the Casserage property. And obviously, there's wetlands concerns that would have to be, um, have to be worked through. But the ideal option is to have the bikeway have a more, um, you know, not have to go on road up Washington Street on D Street to get to the veil site, to have a more direct connection. So, that's why both of those two items were listed in the letter that was, um, sent by the Select Board.
Okay, again, I'll just repeat that I have measured and I, I will get this letter out tonight. It's, it took me an aw, awful long time to make all these measurements. But it is a point one mile difference to go to the end of Sunset Road than to go up Washington Street and go across the bike path. The bike path is one block south of Mont Vale. You don't cross Mont Vale. So, yeah, you, everyone agrees that this, um, excursion around the cemeteries on B Street is awful, but you don't need to do that. You can just go up Washington Street. And, and there, there is no, um, I, I agree that it would be great if you could make a bike path next to the Abra Jona. I'm, um, suggesting if you want to potentially look into it, the only way to do it would be to leave the area that is a dirt road dirt. Don't disturb that. And then make a boardwalk that allows light through it. Um, that'll go quickly up to the veil. It'll have steep grade changes and won't be, you won't be able to use this track, uh, for quite a bit of a year. But that would be the way you could get something. So, and if you got that, it would be shorter, but there would be worse grade changes. So, uh, you know, I, then I understand where it came from. Um, I think it had to do with unfamiliarity about, I, you know, there's a longstanding, um, wish for this 1995-era bike path. In fact, the air, the, uh, the section in my little memo is called 1995 era bike path. But, uh, it, it, it really can't be built. And the thing is, is that Leggett really wanted to build it. It, it, Leggett really championed, heralded this, heralded this idea as this would be something that they would do. So, they can't do that. They've found, and you know what? They can't. It really is not feasible given the regulatory hurdles. But what is feasible, what they could say is we will improve the bike path by putting this crossing at, at the end of, of Sunsets, that people can at least get across the street to the bike path. And that's something that I'm sure that they would be willing to do in lieu of this giant project. And it's something that I think our, our neighborhood would, uh, really appreciate.
Thanks, Anne. Um, so, the, Beth, when you talk about the crosswalk at Sunset, you, the, you're saying that the neighbors at Sunset want it, but actually, to get to the veil and the veil's benefit is to get the other side of Washington-
Right.
-that area. Um, so, um, I get that. I'm just saying the sidewalks on Sunset, to get to that crosswalk, um, is not, if you take the pedestrian access from the veil to Sunset off and are asking them to remove that, then the sidewalks on Sunset are not, but you're, you're saying, Anne, that it's not something that is feasible anyways. But Beth is-
So, I, I wouldn't say-
Right away.
Uh, I, you know, I wouldn't say that there's, that it's not feasible for the sidewalk on Sunset. So, um, you know, that's something we'd have to take a close look at. But there was, and, and Brian can chime in here too, there, there has been conversation about, you know, the desire to have folks in Winchester be able to walk through the veil development and folks from the veil development be able to walk into the town of Winchester to access the amenities in Winchester. So, there is, um, you know, some, from a planning perspective, there is some, um, presumably some, you know, some desire for a pedestrian connection between those two areas. Um, and there are no sidewalks on Sunset, so it would make sense if we're gonna encourage that sort of pedestrian connection to allow, have a safe place for people to walk. So, that's, that's where, and I understand that there may be some concerns from the folks in the neighborhood, um, you know, with respect to i- increased pedestrian traffic through the neighborhood. I, I don't, I think there's things we could do to, to limit vehicular parking if that was a concern. But, um, that was the genesis of that, um, statement that was in the letter that went from the Select Board.
Yeah, I don't think that there's consensus amongst the neighborhood, but I could be wrong about that. Um, that was, um, it sounds like from what Anne is saying this evening is that there seems to be consensus that there is not, there, that there's no desire from anyone to have any type of pedestrian access between the two sites, or sorry, between, uh, the end of Sunset. And so, I was only, like, again-
Between the homes at the end of Sunset and the townhomes in the veil, there is no one who, 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 um, who wants that access. And at this point, there are, because I drew these pictures showing that there really is no benefit from it, they're truly, those people who thought that there might have been some benefit are now convinced that there isn't a benefit. So, um, that, there is no benefit. But there would be great benefit to putting in this crosswalk. It would benefit all of Winchester, because people who want to walk to the veil could get there from any point, whether you're from Forest, whether you're from, uh, Brookside, right? Wherever you're from, you could get across to get to the veil. And that's the benefit of that sidewalk. And that's, I think it's an easy sell to the, to the, to the developer. I personally would love sidewalks throughout the Sunset neighborhood. I, I would walk them every single day. But the one sidewalk that is most difficult to build, perhaps imfeasible, is the one that is immediately adjacent to wetlands with a literal 15-foot drop-off into wetlands next to the, uh, to the public 40-foot space. So, I, I would, you know, I, let's not ask for something that's impossible and not wanted. Let's ask for something that's easy and is wanted.
Heather, is the Planning Board gonna discuss this tonight or no?
Um, the, what I, I just, would, do we wanna come in with anything for their meetings? They're starting to meet the Subcommittee that's not, they're not taking public comment, but they'll accept letters, is my understanding. Did we wanna submit something regarding this? My pet peeve, uh, is the, when we met with the development team about a year ago, um, the discussion about Sunset Road and how they planned and what they presented to the residents and us. And Lance was also there on behalf of the Select Board. Unfortunately, he's no longer on with the Select Board, retired from that position. But they were, they were, um, we had talked about, um, a buffer and that it needed to be softscape instead of hardscape and how important that was. Um, and also what their plans were for Sunset and why I'm interested in this, um, public access point, um, into Sunset for pedestrian access, because that was never presented to the residents and the residents never asked for it nor showed interest in it in our prior meeting.
I wanted to comment on that, but I didn't know if I was able to.
Yeah, no, the Planning Board's welcome to talk. I, please go ahead, Heather.
I think it's pretty short-sighted. I mean, I'll preface this by saying I hear the neighbors' concerns and it is not my neighborhood. But I do think that it's short-sighted, the way that we think about, even when we talk about, um, house additions, to assume that the people who live there will be the only people who ever live there. And I think it's short-sighted to, to assume that no one will ever want a pedestrian connection. Because, in general, having connections for pedestrians and bicyclists is preferable in a community. And maybe someone will live in that neighborhood someday off Sunset and want or need to work in one of the office spaces at the veil. And it would make sense to be able to cut through. So, I, I just don't think we should say absolutely not to, to cutting through there.
Yeah, I concur. I also think there's an argument to be made that, uh, the residents of the townhouses in the veil will be interested in going, walking to downtown Winchester, say.
Right.
Uh, because otherwise, they're trapped in the veil with all of those, you know, commercial buildings, which really-
Oh.
You know, they could drive out of it if they wanted to, but-
But we don't want people doing that, you know? We'd rather have them-
We'd rather have them walk.
And I know that it's easy for people to say they don't want more people cutting through their neighborhood, but it also makes it more safe. There's more eyes on the street. It's not a dead end. Um, you have more activity.
You, can I mention something? Um, the, your discussion is, um, is, 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 is incorrect. You're looking at the benefit of adding a second pedestrian access to the veil, not no pedestrian access versus a pedestrian access at Sunset. There will be a pedestrian access that connects to Forest Street via the MWRA access line. So, if people want to walk here, they can. They would have to go, um, to the MWRA access line. There is a connection for these two sites.
Could we see that on a map, please?
Uh, I do not know of any pedestrian, that there's going to be any pedestrian access that the, they're proposing emergency access with a key fob in order to, so a remote key in order for emergency personnel to go for, for us. I'm not aware of any pedestrian access off of Forest.
So, the, the, Anne, is the pedestrian access, your, your, or the MWRA access, that's the one that's down by 93, correct?
No, it's not by 93 at all. See, this is the problem with, with where I-
Well, please, please point it out then.
Um, okay. Do you see where the end of Forest is?
Uh, at the moment, no.
Brian, can you point to the end of Forest? I mean, the end, I'm sorry, the end of Sunset? And maybe zoom in? Okay. Do you see the end of Forest, the end of Sunset? Alright, now, 400 feet to your right, which is the guy's backyard. See that guy's backyard? You're, now it's his backyard. Can I see like a little white thing? See that little white? That is the, is the access road.
Yes, it's near 93.
It's 400 feet away.
From 93.
No, it's 400 feet away from the proposed access at Sunset. And the proposed access of Sunset, to get there, see, I really wish that, um, that we could look at my, my drawing. I really wish we could look at my drawing. But to get to the end of Sunset, can you see how Churchill, can you see the, to the south of us, Churchill and Forest? No, 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 that's the circle. Keep going. Yeah, see how Churchill and Laurel, right? Laurel Hill and Churchill? Those all travel in the wrong direction. So, if you wanna get from the end of Sunset to, let's say, the Forest Circle area or anywhere in this area, you have to travel along Sunset, along Churchill. And by the way, that's going downgrade on Sunset, a very steep grade, up an extremely steep grade on Churchill. The reason these roads are named Churchill and Laurel Hill is because there are extremely steep roads. And then back hills and then back down to Forest Street. So, the pedestrian access, to, to, thinking that this is a good pedestrian access point is just false. That idea is just false.
Well, to absolve me of my ignorance, can you tell me which end of Sunset is the one that's proposed for these pedestrian access?
The end of, the end of Sunset that is 400 feet away from the, what will be pedestrian access.
So, what you're talking about is-
So, there, there's no, there's no propos, currently, there's no proposed point of pedestrian access between the townhouses and Sunset Road. There's nothing shown on the plan. There's no emergency access or driveway connection from Sunset Road into the townhouse development. The letter that was developed-
What, what, what is this Sunset Road you're talking about?
The letter that was developed, that was sent from the Select Board, recommended that they consider the possibility of adding a pedestrian connection from the townhouse development onto Sunset Road.
And the town-
Not an emergency access. Not an emergency access.
Right.
Just a pedestrian connection so that residents from both communities could walk between the two.
Yeah, and I would recommend that.
I assumed that that would be closer to Washington Street. Am I wrong?
Yes, you are wrong.
It is closer. No, no, I mean, again-
Hold on, hold on.
There's nothing shown on the pla, there's nothing currently shown on the plan. The recommendation was that it be looked at as part of the permitting process. So that, I, I would agree with you, Dea, that that connection would be closer to the Washington Street end of Sunset Road than the, the cul-de-sac end of Sunset Road. I would just physically think to make sense.
My assumption based on the comment about the point of putting in sidewalk, if it's not going to actually be of any avail to the Vale, would be that we would, and you would want to have pedestrian access closer to Washington Street because who in their right mind would want to walk along Sunset, given its topography, when they would just be rather just walk directly to Washington Street, hop onto the bike path and go directly downtown?
And this is my point. It's point six five miles to the end of Sunset Road.
Right, but there's, there's currently no bike path connection to Washington Street. You have to cross Washington Street near Montville Ave and then go down D Street. It's a circuit to it is route, right? So that's why-
You, you do not cross Montvale, but you can just-
I said, you, you cross Washington near Montvale. That's what I said.
That's true, but you could also cross Washington at Sunset with a light. And then just-
Right, but if you're coming from the Vale, the only access is by that McDonald's front to the bike path. It goes between-
And wouldn't you rather ride your bike down Sunset?
If you live in, if you live in townhouse, you're not going to go all the way up through the development to get on the bike path to come down Washington and D Street.
You could go just to the apartments and then out onto Forest, which is actually only four hundred feet away.
If you're trying to make a connection, if you're trying to make a connection to the bikeway, it doesn't make sense for, to dump people on Forest Street because that is much further from making a connection. Whereas you just went down Sunset and crossed Washington, then you could get on the bike way there. But, uh, again.
I mean, to be honest-
There's nothing currently shown on the plan.
Yeah, if, most of the people I see on the bike way are actually walking. So four hundred feet to someone, to a pedestrian is a much greater deal than four hundred streets of feet to someone on a bike, especially if you're going through, you know, non-level terrain. So I, I personally think that access from the Vale to the bike path is a useful thing and not having the access be all the way down in the, uh, at Forest Street. That just seems to be pushing people all the way down there for no good reason.
Okay, when you say all the way down, it is four hundred feet away.
And I keep telling you that four hundred feet to some people is an issue.
Yes, but it's, it's two, it's two backyards.
And it's out of the way. You wouldn't go to Forest Street to go to the bike path or to Gingerbread or anything over there.
You would, this Forest Street is not out of the way. Sunset Street, Sunset Road is out of the way. Forest Street is much more direct. It's a much more direct area. Again, if you're, if you're going, and I, I really, I almost want to ask, maybe you guys could look at my letter before you decide something. And also maybe the best thing to do here is to say nothing because as, um, Beth says, the plans show no, um, no access at Sunset Road right now. And that was something that, um, that the neighborhood really worked at with the meeting with the, uh, meeting with the Leggett several times to get. So now that we have that, you feel so strongly about this that you want to change it? Or do you want to just let this lie?
Well, it's already in the letter and the letter has already been sent, correct?
Okay, so that doesn't mean that it's gonna, that anything's gonna happen about-
No, it doesn't, but-
But we can support it.
If, if we think it's, if the Planning Board thinks that making it easier for people to use a community resource which goes through three communities is a worthwhile endeavor, then I think we should support it. But again, there are trade-offs and perhaps your analysis will help clue us in on what the trade-offs that you see are. But, you know, I don't know that it's not possible to put in access near Washington Street. You have done the work to show that if you put it at the end of Sunset or the end of Forest or in the Forest access point, you know, you have done that research, but has anyone done research showing why it's not possible to put it near Washington Street?
Yeah.
The MEEPA review.
That's the whole, no, that's the whole, yeah, okay.
The MEEPA review did not, they did not conclusively determine that the bike path could not be put in as part of the MEEPA review. In fact, the MEEPA certificate recommends that they continue to evaluate the installation of a bikeway connection.
So I think that's really, I, I was just gonna say, I think that's really the crutch. So if they can get the bike path in from Washington to give the access to the Washington through bike path, and then they can also do the pedestrian at Forest, then Sunset is a mute issue. What happens is if there is no other access and you have to go all the way around, I know that Anne's talking specifically about the neighborhoods, but when you talk about neighbor, are the, you know, over on the northern side, um, the northwest side of Winchester trying to get there, to go there and then go all the way to Forest and up versus go up, uh, straight up toward Bolton and over. They, they would prefer to have, they would prefer to have a access point on Washington Street. So I think what it really comes down to is continuing to push that bike path off of Washington and not discuss a pedestrian pathway using Sunset. And then continue to encourage the pedestrian of Forest. So the pedestrian of Forest and the bike path on Washington is really the main push point of where we want to have pedestrian access. Obviously, we don't want to have any vehicle access because our roads are just not ready to handle that. So I think that's really the two points that are important to make. And I, it does, in the memo, um, it does, it would be great if it came back and said, this is really where we want you to focus on is getting that bike path to connect to the Vale through the, the land. And as Anne pointed out, you can do it where it is raised. They have them in Lexington and, um,
Yeah.
I want to call it Lincoln Park, um, I believe.
Yeah, the, the only way I can see-
They have it through their conservation app, bike paths through that, um, park and playground area through raised beds. And it's actually a really awesome way to travel through that, those kind of areas. But there are options out there, but I would think that asking for the crosswalk at Washington Street would be important to get our, um, the residents west of Washington over and across at a safer point than over by the crosswalk that is, you know, um, it's like forty feet from that terrible intersection, um, where Wendy's is. And you know, that's the other point of crossing really. So if we can get a point of crossing at Sunset to get to the, that side of Washington in a safer spot and then add the bike path, that is a good thing, um, for us, for our transit and movement, um, would be a good support there. If we didn't have that bike path that came through, then there's a discussion, I think Heather and Dea, on, on how you deal with getting the bike path somewhere in that area. Um, I mean, a trans, a, a pathway by foot. But I think the big push is really getting that bike path, which instead of using Sunset, you would use Washington where it says Aborigona River. It's in there, I believe, is where they're talking about trying to get a bike path. Yeah, where it says Aborigona River right up next to Washington Street in the bottom left, um, trying to get that to be the bike path built. So at this point, we don't, I don't think we need to write a letter on behalf of the Planning Board. I think Beth and, uh, Brian are, you're helping the Select Board get their memos out and various things. But, um, I, I would like to see you guys keep that in your, in, um, in your toolbox. Those are the two main high focus points for pedestrian access points. The bike path and, um, hopping off of Washington Street to the Vale. Not using Sunset or Church or any of those streets to make that happen in Forest. Um, and take Sunset out of the equation unless we run into where there's some major reason we can't do a bike path. I'm glad to hear that the MEEPA did say that's, that's not dead in the water in your interpretation, Beth. Platy, are you okay with taking a hold on this? Heather, Heather and Dea, um, do you agree with doing the bike path, focusing on the bike path and the foot path?
I, I agree that the bike path through the, along the Aborigona would be preferable. I, I, I defer to the engineering professionals in terms of how expensive and how practical that would be. Uh, yeah, I agree. It has been done elsewhere. Yeah, I, I think Sunset, we should make it as often as possible.
Yeah, I, I really don't think that anybody looked at, um, the possibility of a boardwalk type, um, design, which is what, what I proposed in that little paper that I wrote. And I-
It would be really helpful if you would send us that paper as well as, I mean, at the beginning, you mentioned there were a number of other issues that the neighbors would like to see. And I don't know if we have time tonight. I'll leave that up to the chair. But, um, I know Brian passed around sort of a, uh, a log of requests and stuff. But if you could put, someone could put that into a more formal presentation, I would prefer to see it that way. So I understand it better.
Okay, in a written presentation, Dea?
Oh, just a memo, yeah.
Yeah.
Just so that I can understand and, and the pros and cons. I mean, I, I read through what the neighbors, the document that was from the neighbors and, um, there were some very interesting things in there which I hadn't considered. But I, I would like to see that fleshed out a bit more and, and presented in a, perhaps a more, I don't know. It, it seemed like, yeah, a memo that would be a little better fleshed out.
Okay.
Okay, um, if needed, um, if needed, and we're going, if there's another memo or something that needs to be written, um, is it okay with the board if we, we just do a mini meeting to address that quickly? So we can agree if we want to join and sign it or not? Instead of having it inside of our, the, these meetings, our main meetings?
Sure.
Well, I'll speak for myself. I'm hearing good comments from all of you. What can you just, who, who wants, I, I think, uh, just circulate something and let's just sign off. I don't, I don't think we need another meeting.
I don't think we can do that without a vote of, of authorizing someone to send it out. I don't think we can circulate a memo on behalf of the whole board through email. It has to be done for the board to review it and sign off on it and give approval. It has to be done in a meeting.
Well, how about delegating? I, I real, um, honestly, I think you guys are on top of it.
I'm fine with, I, like I said, I'm fine if someone wants to delegate it and I'm happy to sign them. But it would be nice if, like, um, Dea or Heather had a set of eyes on it. So it's two, two members of the board.
I am, I am, I'm more than happy to, um, to start drafting such a letter with input from, Anne, if you could send your memo to the Planning Board at Winchester.us, that would be great. I did have one other issue I wanted to bring up. I know that we're, it's getting late, so I'll defer to the chair if there's time for a real quick statement.
On this topic?
Yes, on this topic. The topic that I have, and I think it's kind of a, it's a sort of a slight to the town of Winchester, and it's something they put into the T-Bod. I mean, if you look at the Woburn zoning, it specifically says that, um, you can't have more than a thirty-five foot height if you're within a hundred and fifty feet of one of the residential zones in Woburn. It does not say whether, if you're within a hundred and fifty feet of one of the residential zones in Winchester. And I think that is allowing the, I don't know what the distances are between the structures they're proposing and the residences along Sunset. But I, I'm really not very happy at the disregard, if this is the case, shown to the Winchester residences. And I would, it's, it's in their zoning. They passed it. They stamped it. But I would like to express displeasure, the fact that they're treating residences in Winchester as second-class citizens.
Do you want to include that in our letter?
Well, that would be my proposal. I mean, I don't think there's anything we can do about it at this point. I have other, uh, other opinions about how they, they phrase the T-Bod in terms of the density and, you know, a variety of other things. Um, but that's a separate issue. I can, I can write out all my concerns and send them around to the board and you can determine whether or not you think it's worth putting into the letter.
It might be actually beneficial, Brian, to do it separately, independent of this project. Given what I think you're, the depth of what you're talking, is if you give those to Brian and Brian, uh, consider writing a memo to his counterpart in Woburn, including that information and saying, will you please look into, you know, would you, and have Brian do it versus the Planning Board?
Sure.
I don't know, Brian, what are your thoughts on that?
Um, yeah, yeah, that just sounds like-
Alongside the Planning Board, that you discovered these issues with their zoning, would like them to consider making these alterations.
Yeah, I can talk to both, I, I know the assistant as well as the, the principal planner there, so.
Yeah, I mean, they're not going to change it for this project, but-
No, no, and it wouldn't, but it's more of a-
But it would probably not have-
Something to talk to them about because, you know, this was tailor-made for this site, so.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, okay, I can, I can do that offline with Brian.
Sure.
Okay.
I am pushing, I'm pushing something here. I know I'm not really supposed to do this, but, uh, we, if we are going to designate, uh, Dea to do that, we need, we need a motion that looks similar to something that's on the screen right now.
Can I sign it on behalf of the Planning Board as a chair? Actually, Dea and I both could sign it, but I think how the Select Board doing it, did Mike just sign? I, if I think Mike just signed it, right, on behalf of the Planning?
Yep, correct.
So, um, is it okay if you, if, uh, to Heather and if Dea organizes and drafts it and I sign it?
Sign with me.
Yep.
Um, Heather, I want to make sure before we continue that your concerns, um, are being picked up as well with the Sunset. All right. I just want to double, make another round again and make sure that you're comfortable with the, the bike path in the Forest versus going off of Sunset.
I think it would be really nice to have a bike path, but I also just think it's short sighted to not connect neighborhoods. Because someday people on either side might want to connect and, I, I don't know, maybe no one else agrees with me on that.
No, I agree with you. I agree with you. I just don't know, right now, my memory of where the structures are and what the topography is like is I can't really figure out where such a connection would be best made.
Yeah, we don't have the, right now, up on the screen isn't the topography and the, the grades and the slope changes. Cause there is a significant slope change to Sunset and that's why there's a huge wall being built versus, um, using trees and screening.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's one of the-
In their, in their plan set. Which is, that's the other issue, is there's a huge, from Sunset there, there's a, there's a, if I remember correctly, and I don't have it in front of me because I'm looking at the screen as everyone else is, there's a, there is a big shift in Sunset to the Vale. Right, Brian? I think Brian, you and I talked about it where they had a big, they have a big wall being built at the end of Sunset.
And it's like, it's like, it's like, yeah, it's like this.
Yeah.
With my cursor.
Wall instead of using the national topography of the land, they're creating this huge ginormous wall. Which is the hardscape, which they said they were going to do softscape to, um, hide, to blend it out, but that's not what they're doing anymore. But then you have that huge wall and that huge shift of, and that, the wall that they're creating. And then how do you get that, that passageway through that either as well? It's not like a, just a stroll as, the stroll from Washington to, that will be more of a gentle incline over an extended period as, as a short high uprise. It's almost like stairs. You're gonna have to get to get up there.
Can I, can I just, um, say something?
Hands waving.
The, the most, I want to, I'm, I'm changing the subject. I'm very sorry, but this is the most important thing that I think that our Planning Board would be interested in. And, uh, I think, uh, the chair you attend- And I think the chair, you attended a meeting, at least one meeting back when the T-Bod was being formed. And is that true?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think it was three of them, actually.
Yeah, we, we attended several of them. In several of these meetings, both the city council and the planning board repeated to us as residents that yes, they were making this T-Bod, but we would still have some control over the dimensions and whatever of the site. Because whatever was not specifically mentioned in the T-Bod would be controlled by the underlying zoning. And in this case, for example, I can come up with lots of stuff, but let's take the example of blasting. Does, the, the, Woburn zoning requires a special permit for zoning and it has, for blasting and it has all kinds of requests for that. Well, shouldn't that, shouldn't the blasting at the site be covered by the underlying zoning? What's happened since the time that we were being, you know, we were, that everybody was telling the residents, don't worry, because if it's not mentioned in T-Bod specifically, it's covered by underlying zoning, is that the planning board has come up with a new interpretation of, of T-Bod. The planning board, the Woburn Planning Board is now saying that there's one sentence, and I think it's 28.8.3, I don't, I don't remember the number, but there's one sentence that says, everything about the design and the development of the Vale will be covered by the city council by their, it's really almost arbitrarily. So many of the things that we might be able to get some, some handle on. For example, Woburn has a standard that you can't have a stormwater in basin that's nine feet deep, is now out of the window because it's just up to the city council. So I wonder if, if we could, you know, maybe I can write you something that explains this a little better. But, but this is very dangerous interpretation. They've gone from saying, this is an overlay district, a standard overlay district, to saying, the city council can do whatever the heck it wants. And I'm concerned about that. And I wondered if there, if a planning board to planning board memo might make sense. Of course, if you don't understand my point, then it wouldn't make sense.
Well, it was-
I completely understand your point, go ahead, Deib.
Yeah, I mean, this is the point made in the plan, in the Woburn Planning Board's response letter at the end of June, I believe. And they actually called out the section of the T-Bod, which, it's section 28.5. It, you know, if you read it, it's a question for legal more than planning board. Does legal read that language the same way the planning board does? You know, it's got, not with, you know, I don't need to read it for you, but it's 28.5 of the T-Bod, so.
Yeah, it's like the second sentence. The first sentence says it'll be covered by underlying zoning.
Regardless, that's, that's a legal issue, that's a legal issue. And what it'll fight, go down to is whether the planning board, our, the Winchester planning board wants to talk to Winchester council as to their interpretation of that. And how that would, I don't know how that affects Winchester's rights or anything like that. So I don't know if Winchester wants to go to bat and say, yeah, we, if council decides that 28.5 doesn't have the same interpretation as the Woburn Planning Board, how that affects the arguments that we put forward for storage modern management? So, I mean, that's-
Okay, I'm gonna, anyone want to make the motion that Brian had up? We can, we can talk about it more, Deib, if we can move forward with this and-
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think this is going to require a couple of go-arounds to make sure we address everything. And that's why, you know, I'm more than willing to work on this. And I will with, work with Heather Hannon if she has other input on connecting communities, which I think is a really important issue. And if, Anne, if I can get your input, I will draft something. And I do think we need to at least run it by the board again to make sure that the board is happy with which, the direction of this memo.
Well, am I, yeah, I'm unmuted.
We can hear you more.
I am deeply, I sound crazy. I, I am crazy maybe at this point in this hour. I'm really concerned about getting ourselves back on track with other things where we have a real impact in the town. And I do feel as if what Deib does is great, I think we've discussed it. I think you should get going and I think we have to get moving on other, we've, we've never, I mean, here it is, it's past quarter of the pen. And all we're trying to do is, the next thing is to start figuring out what we're doing over the summer to get the Fall Town meeting. And I, I just want to move this over, if you're willing, Deib, I think it's great, Heather, you can sign it. I want to sign off.
So Maureen, do you want to make the motion?
Yeah, so when necessary to authorize, Deib, Jerryus to organize and draft when necessary? I'm sorry, Brian, can you explain that?
Well, it was unclear when, I can write whatever you want, but it was unclear when this actually would be written, if it's going to be written for the-
Oh, as necessary.
Yeah.
To be authorized, Jerryus to organize and draft as necessary memos and, and Von Mering's sign, and sign memos to the Woburn City Council for the CSL and Pulp Homes, for special permits and other zoning issues. So it would actually be-
Authorized, Deib, Jerryus to organize and draft a memo as necessary?
Draft, I'd say more than one, I'd say memos, because then we can just get through the whole project. Memos regarding the, what's the name of the application?
For the Vale?
Yeah, just keep it general, regarding the Vale.
Yeah, regarding the Vale. And Von Mering to sign.
Yes, a memo, and to sign, right, and Von Mering to sign.
On behalf of the planning board.
Correct.
Yeah, that works. And then we can keep working through it and so it's almost, and get it through. And keep, keep communication and keep it on the schedule too, to meet all the meetings.
Right.
Right.
I think we've got general principles, they've, I think we all agree here and I, there are finer points, like if there's a wall, it's got to be considered, I am happy to delegate. So anyway, that's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All right, we'll call vote, please.
Meister, aye.
Jerryus, aye.
Von Mering, aye. Motion passes four oh and with Betsy Craig or absent. So we'll get working on that. Okay, so fiscal year 21 agenda items. Just so everyone knows, Brian reached out to the resident who was coming in for Spring Town meeting. They weren't ready to meet with us today so that they are going to keep working to get ready and then they'll let us know when they're ready to meet with us. We have, in our immediate, we have some Fall Town meeting zoning that is, the Fall Town meeting, high interest one. So I see you have number 10 open, Brian, on the screen. The site plan special permit mistake is, is on that list. The disability access commission, we already know what that says. The PUD language needs reviewing. I think at this point, without getting into too much depth, I think we need to have a conversation on that. And I am tempted to pull the PUD language out to bring that and have a discussion about that. Because the PUD language really requires, it's really a, a, it's a quasi-affordable housing without going through the 40B process. And, which is fine, but if that, then we, it's really, the whole language just needs to be completely written to really say what it is.
Well, can I take a step backwards on that, Heather? I think, I think that different members of the board have different issues with the PUD language.
Yep.
So I think that, I, I agree that we need to pull it back, at least until the board comes to a consensus about which language needs reviewing.
Yeah, I'm just saying it time-wise. I just wanted to let you know that I'm coming in and my, my concerns with it are going to take time to hash out between all of them.
Right.
And your own concerns too. So I'm talking about it more time-wise, rather than let's have a conversation about it now.
Oh, I agree, yeah.
So if we want to get that for Fall Town meeting, it's going to take a lot of time of, of the five of us meeting to talk about it and come up with all of our issues and build that. It's not a quick thing like one or two is. North Main Street Core. What, Brian, what is that or who put that on the list in terms of what that is for Fall Town meeting?
The North Main Street Core, I thought, that is, I mean, that's tied to the North Main Street study.
Is there any other meeting for that?
No, 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 that was the North Core, that would have been referring to the-
Oh, no, that's the PUD, like, that's the PUD language specifically, the North Main, that's the North, not, it's not the North Main Street.
Oh, okay.
It's the North Core.
It's just the North Core.
North Core.
Yeah.
And I didn't follow, but Heather, Von Mering, you just said, is that what, when you said the resident, are we?
Correct.
That's that, so we're waiting, that's in a holding pattern until they're ready to meet with us. They said they weren't ready.
I don't think we need to put that on our list of things to do.
Well, it's there.
No, we promised we'd meet with them, so it's on our, we have to meet with them.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, I look at these as something that we are personally going to take initiative and do it.
They take time, no, it just should be on the list in terms of just understanding what-
Oh, I agree, but I think that, it's in my mind, any citizen's petition which brings forward or any citizen zoning petition should attract our attention, regardless of whether it's the North Core or not. I just took this list as to be the list that we will be devoting initiative to, rather than just reviewing.
Well, I wouldn't say that. I think this is like, I just think we have to, we need, this is just a plan for our time. You've got a list of what you're going to do during the day, it's not necessarily, you know, everything you want to do.
Fine.
We're trying to manage our time.
I don't disagree with that, but we also don't have a slot which says, let's take care of all the other citizens petitions. I, fine, I don't care. I just, as long as we're not going to put any effort into this until it's brought before us, I don't care.
Yeah, right now that number four is currently on hold until the residents come back to us. Brian did talk to them, Brian, if, I, I was under the impression that they kind of know the time schedule and the crunch they're under. And they're working on it.
Yeah, so what, I had reached out to-
Why were you in name? I know Nancy, who's so quiet and doing, I know she's there, is trying to take minutes. So I assume we're talking about John Stevens, S-T-E-V-E-N-S, right?
Correct, I was just going to say I talked to John Stevens last week when we were doing our agenda. And yes, he's aware of the timeline. He would obviously, he has not made it clear on whether or not he's asking for the planning board to take it on. We had made it, when I say we, I mean, legal counsel and I, and made it very clear to him that if he did want not only, you know, a successful campaign, whatever you would call it, that, you know, getting the planning board to take it over is not, so that it's not a resident petition, they're getting, getting the board to take it over and if they wish to do so, is by far your best rate, best plan for success. So he's basically now trying to get a presentation together in order to, I would imagine, try to get the board to take this on as an article.
Well, I'm going to state my priority, which is that if we're going to go forward, I would much rather see us deal with the, well, let's not call it a variance, but with the alternative means of getting housing built to-
For historic resource, yeah.
Yes.
The waiver zoning, the zoning waiver that we discussed in any other meeting.
That, that to me is something I want us to spend real resources on. Because I think that is a more important issue.
I, I would like to do that too, it just keeps coming up when we, we expect it.
So I, I don't know if we're going to order these by importance, but I would certainly move four down to the end and move three down to the end if I were to order these. Again, maybe we should just do the ordering offline, but.
No, I, that's where I currently am as well. Not that they aren't going to be discussed and worked on, I just don't, at this point, they're on a holding pattern. The PUD stuff, like I said, I, I need to, I, I personally need to go and do a lot of, we need to actually, we're going to have to bring Dennis in to help with the PUD language to clean that up and make it a lot very crystal clear, which I think it is, but I, I think it, when it's all, but with everything else, it's not as crystal clear and it could even, the expectations should be much more laid out.
I agree with you, Heather, I actually think we do need to discuss it at least. Because I wonder whether there's some short-term, like even some way to put something in our design guidelines or something about the PUDs. It just, it, it really is, it's like so open-ended. It gives every, it gives the developers the idea that they can do anything basically, size-wise. And it gives the board no, it puts us in this combative situation, which I think is really harmful. So I guess we'll discuss it, and not now, obviously.
Yeah. In terms of though, like organizing the board's time and what we're going to focus on in terms of meetings and I think we should kick off, I, one and two is done. We're done with that, we just need to make sure we get it in and that's all administrative. With six, we need to meet, we need to, Brian needs to do research and pull up the, the samples. You already did, Maureen, but also the samples that are currently in place in towns. So I would like to allocate him to focus on that for Fall Town meeting. And, and we can schedule with Dennis Carlon a PUD discussion.
And then on the abandoned house bylaw, I know Mike Bettencourt has been quite interested in it and that house on Johnson Road is the one I keep seeing. But in reality, when I saw what was going on at 88 Harvard, it needed to be secure. It wasn't, it had open windows and so on. So, and the lawn hadn't been mowed. There's some real, I think, problems with, and with what's going on, but Mike was quite concerned. You know, at some point, the whole situation, Washington is swanton, was very disturbing to a lot of residents in town.
So, Maureen, I, I'm not going to, we, we can, we don't need to debate it. What in terms of this is your priority for Fall Town meeting, given that?
More than, as you say, a couple, the one, two, three are all, like, there's no, there's no big effort. Our, one, two, where are we? Three, I'd like is discussion, not head to town meeting, but I just want to start talking about it. I think we could take on five and six, both.
I agree, I, I would really like to see five.
Okay, so three is not for Fall Town meeting, but to start the process?
A discussion here, internally.
Yeah, so that would be moved to spring of 2020.
Well, don't forget, there may be some way to get at that too, through our design guidelines. In which case, that's not as big a hurdle, it's not town meeting.
Yeah.
There's some discovery here to be done.
Um, yeah, so we all, PUD language review, that should be pulled out at Fall Town meeting and put in a general item, but brought to
Yeah.
a higher level of looking into it. Because if we can do it through guidelines, and that's a lot easier and quicker to do. And that's a question as well for Art. If, I, I don't even know if we need to ask Art, I think it can, I'm pretty sure. Just depends on the length of what we're doing. In terms of overall, the big picture items, we have Fall Town meeting, we have, I have a general idea right now to get us started for our, our scheduling of our meetings going forward to get us and planning out to get to Town meeting. We have a lot of things that we're all interested in doing. And just, if you could choose your top two priority items and let me know or let the board know right now, that'll also help me as well in terms of what's going on our agenda. And we can keep going back to it.
Could we get a, this updated spreadsheet? Because it, it-
Of course, yeah.
It's changed a bit from the one you shared on the shared point, share point.
Oh. Oh, I will definitely do that.
And you can take out number three, cause it's already in number ten.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Wow, we got rid of one already.
So I think the idea here was that some of the things on this list can be going forward, um, without a lot of agenda time. Um, we know that the subdivision closeouts, number seven, is something mostly we're not spending time on. It is Brian's time though. Um, which is why you heard from me at the beginning of this meeting. Um, and we, it's, I mean, we own that. We totally own that. And, but it is, it's going to be involved with council and it continues, um, its work. So there's that, there's the, um, uh, the appointments. Those are, I think, where did that go? This is moving.
It's number two on the list.
Yeah, that, I mean, the one for the Ransley Park District is such a minor thing, but it's our obligation. And I, um, think that it was, the posting was held, I think in February or something, and we've just never put the, five minutes on the agenda to bring that forward. So, um, that just, it's our obligation. We do that. Uh, let's see, there were a couple, there were a few other things here that were on the list. Um, the fees, um, that was supposed to be a bigger, that could be a memo with our, uh, talking to Art. We left you, Brian, I think, with some general direction. We're trying to figure out how we might assess the situation with the subdivision partway through. Or if Art has some other idea, he certainly knows Highland Avenue inside and out. Just how to recover more of the costs of some of these, I'll call them more complicated subdivisions. So we were, we, that's not really our agenda time until there's a presentation from Brian, um, and maybe Art. Um, but that's, I think a bunch of these don't have to take up that much time, um, in terms of our agendas.
In terms of our agenda items, there are ones that you are aware that are gonna take. What are your top priorities at this time?
Well, I think we're going to get drawn in. I'd really like to figure out what's, we're going to get, going into the Waterfield project. We're going to be, I mean, there are things that aren't on the list, right, that are going to come to us. We're hearing that there's going to be a filing on, um, what do you call it, on Main Street, coming in probably in a few weeks.
They said August, yeah.
Outside of the town meeting stuff, that we should be taking on a huge, uh, made other agenda stuff. But I'd like to think that there are some things that can take five minutes and get them done, like number two or number five, where it's, it is Brian's time. I don't want to minimize that, but our times shouldn't, wouldn't probably be that, um, uh, that much. So am I answering you, Heather? I think we.
Yes, no, I, I, I see where your, your goals are, and I, I got it. I got that part of it. Um, Heather Hannan, did you have any things you want to prioritize?
Um, I just was wondering if ADUs was still on this list.
It's at the bottom, it is.
I feel like that's picking up popularity, not necessarily in our community, but around the country right now. With people, um, well, not only losing their jobs and needing income, but wanting more office space. Yeah, I just feel like it's, it's like bubbling up again as a topic.
It's one of my, it's one of my tops, my tops. I am, uh, especially for, um, wait, in the, when you guys originally, I think, Diav, and you originally researched it, or maybe it was Brian and you, Heather. There was discussion that you can, you have to own the house for so many years. So it doesn't turn into a developer, right? Just building, uh, extra units, um, and.
Well, one of the criteria people have sometimes is that it ha- has to be owner occupied, the main, the main dwelling.
Yeah, um, and there, there are certain things like that you could do. And I think it makes it a lot more pleasing. There's also the, you know, you, the unit has to read as one unit, right? So inside, it's, it's embedded inside of the, um, house. And there's all different things to do to make it so it will work with our community, but I think it's really important to make those accessory dwelling units an option. Um, I know that there are a handful of residents in town who are working strongly to try to get, um, disability. Um, more availability for more disabled, um, using accessory dwelling units at the state level. I think at the local level, we should also be looking into that for multitude of different needs. But I, it's, it's unfortunate. And I know in the past, we did have a resident come who tried to go to town meeting. I, but it, I don't think they ever went to ask for accessory dwelling units for family members who are disabled. Maureen, do you remember that?
Well, there was someone that presented to us.
No, not only that, it actually did come before the, um, town meeting quite a few years ago, and I am talking about, I realize, I have to be realistic here. It was about twenty, but it was a huge, um, it, I, I mean, it was a big, it was, it was not, it, uh, the older residents still remember it, so it didn't go well.
Yeah, I'm sure, um, there's, but we can be more, we can be clever in how it's done, so it's, it's not as evasive.
We'll say, when I'm, just if I can jump in on this one, that when I look at number thirteen, for example, L H D, we've already got the committee set up and it's just been languishing. And that was something else that years ago, it flopped gloriously and the select board wouldn't support it. And I'm talking about a really long time ago. And now we've got, we got the vote. It was a unanimous vote and the committee exists. And so that's already something that's happening, uh, but has languished. And so again, I guess I'm saying, well, that one's also good and it's already there. So if we're going to add more to the list, I'm trying to be really realistic. I think we're going to be swamped just this summer if we have a few zoning thing. I mean, well, one of them, they are zoning, a few zoning things, and then, um, uh, with the filing for, I, I just feel like we've got to be realistic here and it's already almost ten after ten and we haven't reviewed our minutes. It's, it's just, that's the reality. Waterfield will be filed. We're going to be busy.
Yeah, and also doing it by Zoom, everything takes so much longer.
And I'm really concerned that we are focusing on the near term and not the long term, and that we're not doing long term planning. And that really concerns me. I think that we are picking off the easy stuff, which I agree is something we need to do. But we're also constantly saying, we don't have time, we can't focus on this, we have other things. And I think that, uh, that's to the detriment of what we need to do. And so I think of the ADUs and the tiny houses, which aren't reviews, and other things like that as being important for long term planning. We haven't looked at any of the H P P stuff, which has a lot of planning work going into it. Um, I'm really concerned that we're just gonna keep pushing those off year after year after year. And we're not gonna do any, it's just, we're just gonna be a very reactive board. And, and so that's where I'm coming from.
Oh, I think there was a point when somebody was saying there were, I don't know how many years, decades, when, um, nothing was being built in the town center. Well, things are being built and they're very large. So if that's how we have to spend our time, I think that's, um, I mean, it's a good use of our time.
I don't disagree, but I also think there are really pressing issues having to deal with affordability of homes, with people with disabilities or elder who need access to ADUs. Uh, I, I think there are other issues than just the C B D. Well, the C B D is important. Um, we have a whole boatload of issues. We have, you know.
No, we have more than twenty years of zoning on North Main Street. We now have money that we got from town meeting. And that's also in the mix. So I just.
But it's actually not here listed as anything that we're supposed to do. Uh, we don't have North Main Street.
Isn't it, Brian?
The study is on there.
The study is on there, but we also said that we were going to do, uh, visioning with the community. So, um, the study, you know, I, I, I'm just, I, I'm a little frustrated, to be honest. Um, I, I see things that are, you know, C B D is a very important thing, but our neighborhoods need a lot of help. And I think we need to do more to concentrate on there. And that's where I see the ADUs come in. Um, and I'm just frustrated that we're not pushing there, cause.
Actually, you know what? If we're just putting a list together, there's one that's missing. So if you can add one, it is the teardowns. And I still think we, um, want to get back to that. That's probably the, still the single biggest issue for most residents.
I.
One thing that I'm interested in that I don't think is really on here, well, maybe it counts as zoning related to equity, is, um, is zoning for, for small multifamily. You know, right now, most of the neighborhoods are, um, are single family, but we don't see, you know, we're not allowing people to put in duplexes really in new air, you know, in places where they weren't.
You mean, yeah, that's, it's, it's something I've been talking about, not with the planning board, but with members of the community a little bit, about, um, the history of zoning in general.
Yeah.
You know, you have these very large properties that you can't.
You know, you can't cut them up.
You can't, yeah. You can't take those and divide them into, uh, multi-units. I mean, they're substantial size, but they're, they're, have to stay a single. And.
Like even the stuff that bugs me on Grove Street, it wouldn't have bugged me so much if those had been two units. For the new houses that, um, you know, when the lots were subdivided for the two large homes on Grove Street. If the new houses that were built there weren't, you know, a couple million dollars, but, you know, two or three units, I, that would have made me feel like the trade off was worth it more.
Well, I think one of the things, um, is it on here, Brian, the, the, the multi-unit overlay zoning?
Um, I don't believe so. The one we just put here was the two to six unit, but. That's, uh, yeah, I guess it's probably already on there then.
There's so much that we want to do. And there's only so much bandwidth we have. We have our lone wolf, Brian, for staff. Right? And the five of us are, are very, have a lot going on. And then you got COVID on top of all of it. So maybe we, we have, I just trying to figure out how to make this year work the best for us. With all of that and knowing all of that, but knowing that we all want to do some big things. And I don't know how to move through that as a, as a unit.
Well, and also some of us have different amounts of time that we can give to this. So, I mean, I don't think I'm, I don't think I'm holding back. I do produce things, but it's, uh, it's a limited amount of time people can.
I, I would be, I would be encouraged if we could prioritize one or two, large items and say, we're gonna work on this at a low level, but make progress over several years. So that we could say, okay, we want to do ADUs and maybe, I don't know, choose something else. So we would have a continuous effort.
Yeah, like length of time. Let's take it now, who's, where it's responsible. Cause there's certain things on here that really is, me just putting it on and Brian giving us an update, like the subdivisions, right? Um, and I hate talking about you, Brian, like you're not here, you're here. Um, but there's other ones we can do in le- length of time and break it into quick, quick, short, medium and long. Um, and then choose a couple from each of them.
Yes, I like that idea.
And maybe that'll help us, um, get more to take this long list and really look at, we'll choose, you know, two to three. Um, quick and the long term, um, on the long, long term, maybe we choose one. Um, and just, and those are the kind of like the, that really sets the agenda for where we're going, minus all the items that will be coming in. Like the C B D application that they said. They said that's coming in August, by the way, for Main Street.
And that will take time.
Yeah, um.
So, so can I make a suggestion that we all go off and start, finalize what's on this list, so we don't keep adding things? Um, write down next to them whether we think it's a long, medium or short term goal or plan.
And then, could you go that, go to the top? Whoops, whoa, whoa, whoa. It was a good, yeah. Can you scroll, I guess you say down, so we can see the top of this? Right, because I do think first understanding who's responsible is part of the discussion.
Oh, I agree. And, and I think that's part of the, that's why I would suggest we all walk off. And, and, cause we're, we're running out of time this evening. Um, I am going to turn into a pumpkin soon.
I already am a pumpkin, I think.
Okay, well.
And also I want to point out, we never voted minutes. So I, I just, it's, we've got.
We tried, we tried, early in the meeting, we were gonna do it first. But I, I would suggest we take this, finalize this list in terms of what's on it, and then we, each of us take off, split it up the way we think, and then we come back and put it together.
Okay. Um, all right, so let's do that. Brian, can you send me the draft, um, later on, um, of this? I'll, I'll go through it and then I'll forward it to the board to make their comments, um, in terms of, what I see, and then they can make edits and we'll come back to it as a board. Um, in the meantime, I, we're pretty set with our agenda for the next meeting anyways. Um, to go through, just to wrap up everything, we'll do the meeting minutes. Um, I think what would be beneficial going forward is we have a long list of meeting minutes that have been done. Thank you so much, Nancy, for all that. Um, I think it'd be beneficial if we did it as one big packet. We have ones from our last meeting that we have, which I had, some don't have in hand. We have the ones emailed. We have a long list of ones that are outstanding. If we can get those all in one PDF, Maureen, Maureen, we can print you a copy. Um, in one, so then we have it all the same document in front of us versus piecemealing from different places. That would help us in our next meeting get through those meeting minutes as fast as possible. But the meeting minutes again will be the first, and hopefully we won't have techni- technical difficulties to get those through, but.
Yeah, it was a computer.
But let's do that to get one solid, these are all of them. Uh, I think there, at this point, there's eight, eight, um, meeting minutes that will need to be reviewed at that point. So we get all those eight dates in one packet. We can easily all have it in front of us. And then if we need to print it, we can print it or have it printed for you, Maureen.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, I'm just gonna go, uh, Brian and I are gonna schedule a meeting with Lisa to talk about, um, how we're gonna move through to do's for Brian and our department. Um, we are going to add, um, the, into discussion, the waiver for zoning for historical resource, which is now currently on things, that's already done. Um, we are going to also, um, Diab is going to, sorry, someone just rang my doorbell. So, um, Diab is going to, with Brian, um, put more detail into the Z B A petitions answers, which I don't think we have much to share besides our approval on those three, but we need to get those Z B A petition, uh, uh, feedback back out to the Z B A for their review. Um, the veil, uh, Diab is going to work on the memo and, uh, alongside with my signature for the veil on behalf of the planning board. And then all of us are going to work on this document after I, I take a stab at it and we'll send it back out.
And Heather, what about Converse Place?
Uh, that is going on our agenda. I just was giving an update. We're gonna put that on our agenda to, talk about what we want to say and make it very crystal clear, the issues with that.
Did I suggest that, I'm sorry, that was when my compute, actually, it was just the compute, the computer's fine and the Zoom just didn't come in properly. It was glitchy and I had to shut down and start over. But anyway, with the, um, Converse Place, um, I do think it would be desirable for somebody or to send us all a link. If it's, if that meeting was on, um, uh, what do you call it, Wind Cam, which most, I mean, they usually are. There was one that it shut down on, but I, there didn't turn out, it didn't record, but I believe that one was. But if that's on Wind Cam, I would really like to be as close to where we left off with that, um, Converse Place. Cause I believe, Heather, and you seem to recall the same thing, that you summarized it quite well. So I'd like to stick to as close as where we actually left off, rather than just starting from scratch with all of us thinking what we thought about, um, Converse Place. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yes. Are those meeting minutes complete? Nancy, do you know if the meeting minutes for the last meeting we had with the applicants for Converse Place is done?
Yep, I'm pretty sure that was in the packet.
Um, okay.
You have a date?
I don't know what date it is. That's, that's, that's why I was asking if you remembered writing them.
Uh, be, uh, between the January, February ones and now, um, I'd have to go back and look.
It's, it's probably in May.
It was later, yeah, cause I have right here, it's just a few that were printed, and I know we discussed it in Ja- the January seventh, but that was really at the front end of the whole, and that one was Converse Place. But, um, the, I think whatever you did, I'm sure Nancy is good for minutes, but I think given the sensitivity of this, that we really all should just, or maybe Brian should just go back to, or maybe Nancy can send the link or. Or maybe Nancy can send the link or somebody's got the Wind Cam. And we really do need that one. Uh, really, uh, more elaborated than would be typical than in the typical minutes.
Yeah, it's just trying to find which, we, where that is. When that last, the date of that last meeting, but we can go back through.
Yeah, it'll be.
And it was before, um, it was before June.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, was it perhaps May the twelfth? Oh, no wait, maybe it's the nineteenth. I've got a lot of Converse Place presentation stuff on the.
Well, I know, I would have it if I were with, if I, if I had all my plans, which I do, that they're not in the room where I am right now.
I think at the same time, if, uh, we get those dates and the meeting minutes are done, we should do them simultaneously. The memo and the meeting minutes for that meeting.
Yeah.
Um, they should be done at the same time. Um, so, um, okay, so we gotta figure out that date of when that meeting took place. Um, and grab the meeting minutes and then the memo, and then we'll do, we'll go over that. So that's on my agenda for our next meeting. Um, so we'll do the meeting minutes and Converse Place is on our next agenda. And there's a chance that, uh, Mr. Stevens will be also asking to be on that meeting. I'm sure we'll have ZPA petitions. And then we have to do some work to start moving some of those items for the, uh, town meeting forward.
Just, um, one more, I want to go back, cause it was such a big issue last night with the Converse Place. Um, but I do think also, it's really fair and, uh, important to understand some of what's said. There work, there were lots of, uh, I think, points of common agreement, but they don't have to be unanimous either. That it's appropriate for a board not to, we don't all have to agree all the time, this is government. And that's the reality with a permitting process. So, and this was a pre-application meeting furthermore. So I think that some, that memo can also describe that specific people said certain things. And that's okay.
Yep, absolutely. Um, okay, let's. Um, did you, the other item that's left lingering is the Chris Mulhern's concern about offices not being allowed in it. In the accessory unit, uh, buildings, not units, but accessory buildings or properties. And they're asking the select board and the planning board to request town meeting to strike that from the zoning.
Uh, I am, uh, I am sympathetic to that. I just want to make sure that, uh, we don't let the barn door open to something we don't want.
Um, I don't know the history of why that's in there.
I remember, it's been there a long time. I actually have thought it was outdated from years and years ago. Um, I mean, it may, if years ago, people weren't working at home. Um, that said, it's, I think, another example of where this might not be the priority of this board for this fall town meeting. But if he's, well, he's not a resident, but if he is a citizen who wants to bring it in, then we take him, and we can do what we do with a citizen's petition.
Okay. Yeah, they're looking for, he was looking for us to take it on, I think. Well, he's actually looking for the select board to take it on. The select board, I think, was hoping we'd do it.
I think it's worth looking at, but I don't think, I mean, and, and, you know, to be honest, I think we're gonna be dealing with this. Working at home for the foreseeable future, more than just, you know, till the end of this year. So maybe next spring, although. I'm more than willing to take a look at it, you know, say as, as a off project. And see if there's some, uh, local, some other towns which have something which looks reasonable. And I can present it to the board in a couple of months.
Okay, sure, take it on.
Somebody remind me of that. Put it in the minutes, Nancy, please.
I think that would be really interesting. And I know that, uh, for my work, we're planning on being at home for about two years, probably.
Yeah, my, my work is barely entered phase two, so.
Well, I, I'll jump in and say this was, it, this actually has some controversial component to it. I'm not the one, I, it's not controversial to me, I'm fine, but I, it, some home businesses do involve people. Who come to the house and then there's parking and how much parking, how much coming and go.
I did look at it once this came in. I did look at this section of the zoning. That all can stay in, that you, you can increase the parking and the, you know, the typical, that, all that language can stay in. It's really just saying that you can build an accessory unit just for your office. Or you can have your office in your garage. Is really, if you, there's one line that you could, that you want strict, like, stricken. Cause right now, there are tons of people in town who are working in their garages, right? Or they're, um, in their, you know, in their, their sheds that are left over and stuff. There are people doing it right now because they don't, they can't be in their houses for whatever reason. And they're going, what he pointed out is, all, everyone who's doing that is going against the zoning.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree. I think there was a fine line between saying you can use an existing structure. Or you can build a new unit in which to do your business. And I think that's, that's, that, that requires an understanding of.
And that's where it needs to be investigated. But there is language in there, Maureen, about the traffic and the, you can't have people visit you.
Right.
At your house.
Uh, I remember one in particular, I could tell you exactly where and who. And it, it really was, there was a big fracas. And of course, the zoning in the end did not allow it. But it was, uh, I mean, it does get people cranked up when there are questions about how much traffic there would be. And whether what's being represented is actually going to happen. I'm fine, if we want to go forward with it, it's fine. But it's just, I've, I've seen the controversy, it does involve.
Well, the other thing is, is, one thing is working from home to keep social distancing and safe practices. It's another thing to just bring your business into your house to save money and then create all the traffic coming in, where you can't, you're not creating the safe distances and the safe.
Right.
Um, so. You're visiting people, you shouldn't be visiting people around other people. Right on. Um, all right, DAB, you're on it.
Okay, remind me about that sometime.
It's gonna keep coming up, I think. I mean, it's.
Okay, well, it's good.
We'll add it to the list, add it to the list, Brian.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Put my name next to it.
Can, yeah, as a responsible party, it's all on your court. That might be what we also have to do, is we have to go through the whole list and make someone responsible for it. So they keep making sure, where is this, why is this not on the agenda? Right? Advocate for that, your line item.
Oh, so I'm just asking back to that. Can we bring in, and, or just, I can't remember if we have any appointments on design review. But we do have those, and then Ransley Park, can we just get those done?
Yeah. I'll put out my, my notes here for, of next agenda items. Okay. Does someone want to, I would love to, let's just adjourn. Someone give me a motion.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Um, do we have, we'll take a second, DAB?
I'll second and third.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you so much, everyone. Good night. Big dreams.